So I think we can get started unless.
Well, you hold on, I'm not the host at the moment because Macy jumped on, so I need to be assigned so I can record.
Sorry.
Well, we are recording, we're good.
So we are, we are recording?
Yes.
Okay, great, I'd like to call together. I call to order, not together, the, the, um, open session for tonight's BOT meeting on November first, 2022, opening at seven oh nine, if we could go ahead and take roll.
Mayor Billy.
Here.
Trustee Blakemore.
Here.
Trustee Corvallon.
Yeah.
Trustee Cooms Ismael.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Mahol.
Here.
Trustee Severs.
He's not currently here yet, Macy.
Oh, I'm sorry about that, um, will he be joining us this evening?
He was here, he'll be likely.
Okay, um, so, note for the record that he's not here currently, but he will definitely be joining us this evening, and then trustee Sterling.
Here, um.
Thank you.
Trustee Severs just joined.
Okay, great, thank you so much, trustee Sterling.
And I'm here, this is Jesse.
Thanks Jesse, thanks Macy, I'd like to go ahead and call to order and move to the consent, consent agenda. Do we have any questions or anything on the consent agenda? I know I had emailed one little thing about the minutes, and I'm not totally attached to it, I didn't look to see if you guys replied.
And I do just want to know, Mayor Billy, that we do have LeAnn on to talk about the family court awareness, if you wanted to allow that before you approve the consent agenda.
Yes, that would be great. Because that is part of the consent.
It is a part of the consent agenda to proclaim November as Family Court Awareness Month.
So LeAnn, are you with us?
I am.
Would you please proceed?
Sure, yes, thank you, thank you so much Macy for setting up this opportunity and just allowing me in here to speak with all of you, and I appreciate all of your time for listening on what I feel is quite an important matter, both personally and just learning about what is basically an epidemic going on in our family court system, I'm not sure how much each individual here in this meeting has knowledge in the background, but family court's kind of a different hybrid model of the court system, and kind of operates on a different set of rules, so it's become quite, quite a problem in the last, well, gosh, forty years plus, but seemingly a big problem for protective mothers in the system. That was just a pop-up on my screen.
Sound good here.
Good, it was saying I had a low connection, like, it looks fine, uh, so I sent a couple of documents, the, the, the letter that says, Dear, Dear Judge and Dear Magistrate is a letter from Barry. Sorry, I'm nervous, I'm forgetting his name, Barry Goldstein, and he is a pretty renowned expert witness, domestic violence expert in, in the country that often will, will serve as sort of an expert witness in court for victims of domestic violence, although he is in high demand and he's very expensive, so when a lot of victims such as myself are, are entering the family court system and expecting to be protected, we are quickly finding that the abuse gets astronomically worse once we get into the family court system, and it actually, as Tina Swiden, the founder of Family Court Awareness Month, has coined it, you get then appointed your own personal terrorist through the court system. And I, I, I included this letter, and hopefully if you had, have time, or if you do have time, you can read Barry's letter, I just found that it was, it was very well put together in, in a Me Too sense, it's, it extremely, extremely, sorry, it explains extremely well, um, kind of the, the systematic way that myself and particularly several other mothers in Boulder County Court that I'm in communication with, and what's ironic is a lot of us seeing the same magistrate are also seeing the same systematic tortures, as I've, I've called some of them, because they don't make sense. We are often stay-at-home mothers that, you know, endure enough abuse, and, and we're told by psychologists, like myself, I was told by psychologists, I was told by the Domestic Violence Hotline, I was told by Louisville Police Department that I needed to leave, just leave, you know, leave, and I had a safe place to go, thankfully, or I would be homeless, but once I left and I entered family court, it has been the most big, the biggest nightmare of my life, and I, I would not wish this on my worst enemy, so I really felt like this letter, um, highlighted a lot of the statistics with the ACEs Study, which is the peer-reviewed medical research that goes over the impacts of domestic violence and major traumas that children are exposed to, and the impacts that it has on them. And a lot of the harm is not immediate, you don't see it, so as I've heard from a lot of people, your children are fine, but oftentimes you find out they're not fine later, because right now children seem, they're very resilient, so they don't often show it, and this, this letter goes into detail more about the systematic things that I personally have experienced, I know I have personally spoken to almost a dozen women in Boulder County. I've also spoken to over a thousand women in the last six years, just personally myself, that are going through the same thing in nearly every state I think I've talked to, and many women across the world, and I, and I've found new, I say friends, it's sad to find friends this way, but this is how I'm finding friends as an adult woman now, is through going to the International Coercive Control Conference and learning more about this happening across the world, and it's happening to women specifically, so Family Court Awareness Month very much is a movement towards bringing awareness, and not only just awareness, like, I mean, I, I ask of you that we issue this proclamation in hopes that we can provide a better future for our children, and so that women that want to escape and, and need to escape domestic violence can safely do so, because statistics are showing that they're often harmed worse after leaving, the lethality rate goes up post-separation, and as I included with the post-separation abuse wheel, it breaks down the different types of abuse that often happen once you leave, and again with the Me Too, every time I read these, and I could have pulled a ton of articles and, and facts, but it's, it's sad that all of them are a Me Too for me, all of it, and so I'm really passionate about this Family Court Awareness Month, and, and one, raising awareness, but also once we have the awareness that the training is not there, or the police, the training is not there for the judicial people, the training is not there for domestic violence and coercive control, which is written in our law. They're not trained on it, so when you see a stay-at-home mom who maybe seems hysterical or isn't acting right, and then a very calm person saying she's crazy, judges are just often going, she must be crazy, and they're taking kids away and putting them in much more harmful situations, and as the last brief letter that I had included, it was just another article from an attorney that he wrote, sort of highlighting the same patterns that we're seeing, that CPS doesn't want to get involved, professionals don't really want to get involved, and there seems to be this judicial trafficking industry of draining us, driving us into bankruptcy, pathologizing us almost to death, and holding our kids hostage, and it's, it's an epidemic, it's not rare. People kind of look at me like, how is this happening, and what am I missing, and what are you not telling me, but it, it really is bad math, it really, it doesn't add up, but it's happening day in and day out, so my hope first is to get this proclamation issued, but also to start taking action in getting more training going to people understanding the post-separation abuse wheel, I would like that to be used more as a tool in our court systems and, and in our domestic violence escape resources, and, and have people more aware of these cycles of abuse that are actually keeping people trapped way beyond them leaving the household or the relationship, so. I think that covers a lot of it, if you want me to go into some statistics, there's quite a few that are quite scary in the United States just since two thousand and eight. It's estimated, I, I just checked the other day, and there are up over eight hundred and sixty children have been murdered because they were court-ordered into abusers' hands despite evidence, despite pleas from their protective parent, and that's just too many, I mean, they'll recall a child's toy if it kills one infant, which they should, but kids are dying every day from family court, and there's no accountability, judges don't have accountability, and there's no training. So there's a lot of awareness and action that needs to happen. And I appreciate the help and time that, that you guys give, and hope that you help in the advocating of our future as well with our children.
Thanks, LeAnn, I appreciate it.
If I could just say, yeah, LeAnn, as a Boulder County foster parent, and I've had a lot of experience with the family court system in our county at least, and I'm just very grateful for you and, and your, your courage in bringing this forward and raising awareness around this particular issue, it's very near and dear to my heart, so thanks very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it, and thank you for your contributions. Does anyone have any questions, or happy to, if you want to email me, or you can get my contact information from Macy, and I'm happy to, I, there's some studies, there's some places to submit some information, so we're also trying to, you know, gather other other victims to give them a voice where they feel hopeless. I haven't seen my kids in a hundred and thirty-seven days based on false allegations and my due process being removed, so there's quite a lot happening, and would love to join with other people who are the same, so we can support each other.
LeAnn, can you give us a general idea of where you live, are you a Nederland resident, Boulder County?
I'm not, I lived with my ex where I had my children in Boulder County, but we were in his childhood home in Louisville. They're like three blocks away from the closest burn area, so they also went through that, and just, they've been through a lot of trauma. I live in Adams County is where I had to, I had, you know, I was a stay-at-home mom with no money, so I went to my parents' house in Henderson, which is Adams County.
So. Thanks for sharing that.
Thanks.
Any questions, trust, remote trustees, Corvallon, Severs, and Sterling?
No, I'm sorry to hear about what's been going on with your kids, it's the worst, I'm really sorry.
Well, I appreciate that, thank you, and it's, I guess I get a little modest, because it's not just me, it's lots of mothers, but it's, it is amazing, my ex is a convicted felon, he lost custody of the other kid in from county, because his kid is countable, is hell-bent on turning me into a childless crazy person. So it's, it's bizarre, but it fits the statistics that are backed up in the research, so it's, yeah.
So the point of this proclamation is just to bring awareness in the month of November to the issues?
Yeah, well, and all year round, I would hope that it's not just November, I hope that, you know, we could, like I said, bring more change to our communities, like I have talked to the chief of police in Louisville, and he was kind of shocked, I was written a ticket based on hearsay and no evidence to him, and he quickly realized that when they write a ticket, it's not just a ticket that they're writing, because then my ex ran to the court, filed emergency things, it blows up into something else, and now, you know, there's, it's, it's three more levels deep of not just a ticket. So it, it's kind of, everybody plays a role to some degree, whether it's, you know, city workers, government workers, CPS workers, mandated reporters in general, just having more awareness, because kids can also appear fine, like, like a lot of the research shows, often the abuse is not physical, there's not marks. So getting people trained to recognize patterns, to recognize just the different responses to fear. So, yeah, the proclamation is just, we would like to get, you know, the, America is broken down by fifty states, and each state has counties and cities, and it's very, kind of, it's very difficult to make change, because you really have to start from the small towns and work your way all the way up, so this is where it's sort of the grassroots, and, and having your help and having your name on that list too is definitely beneficial for the movement to, to get more traction, to say this is a systematic problem that really needs addressed and changed.
Thanks, LeAnn, we appreciate you being here with us today.
Thank you.
Presenting this for us, and so this is part of our consent agenda, and Jennifer, did you want to touch on the Disposal of Public Lands Amendment, or are we, I think we took care of those at the discussions today? Just a couple of words that needed to be edited.
Yeah, there's, there's no changes.
Okay, great. Excellent, so that being said, we have four items in the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I will second that. Can you take the roll, please, Macy?
Of course. Mayor Pro Tem Mahol.
Yes.
Trustee Cooms Ismael.
Yes.
Trustee Severs.
Yes.
Mayor Billy.
Yes.
Trustee Sterling.
Yes.
Trustee Corvallon.
Yeah, yes.
And trustee Blakemore.
Yes.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, now we'll move on to public comment on non-agenda items, we have two letters that are, that we've received in the recent past, and are, are here on the record, one from Gavin Cooms, and one from Harden Buck, is there anyone else attending who would like to make a public comment on a non-agenda item?
Ron Mitchell, Nederland, last meeting that I was here, I mentioned that I'm very concerned and hoping that you will be delving into the issue of the water rights and come up with some concrete plan, and I think that, at least my opinion is, that there's only one spot you can find a reservoir, and that's on Kayla Evans' property, and I think you should seriously consider starting negotiations with her right away.
Thanks, Ron. Any other public comments from, on non-agenda items from folks in the room? Any public comments on non-agenda items from folks attending virtually? Raise your hand or start talking, press star six. So hearing none, I want to go ahead and move to our informational item tonight. Excuse me, Erica Thorley, our sustainability coordinator, is going to give us an update, Erica.
We do.
How's that?
Much better.
So thank you, everyone, it's great to be here, it's been a while. My name is Erica Thorley, and I function as a sustainability coordinator for the town of Nederland. And I wanted to take you all through tonight some of the history of sustainability, recent history in Nederland, and then what was accomplished by our previous coordinator, and what am I working on now. And then we also have Larry Tacaday, who's a member of our Sustainability Advisory Board, who'd like to come up and just speak to zero waste, possibly some other elements of the Sustainability Advisory Board as well. So, the next slide. You know, many of you know these bullet points, especially those of you that were on the Invision twenty twenty and Invision twenty thirty initiatives, but I wanted to take you through this, because we have had a lot of really strong resolutions and action items that we've partaked in, or took in, for Nederland. So, two thousand and four is the first that I could really pull from the resolutions, I'm curious actually when we started posting resolution documents on the web. But that was, you know, preferred practices. And then we talked about fracking, we've got the creation of our SAB board, and pretty early on, the SAB decided that a coordinator was going to be key to success in the town of Nederland. So it's been something that's been talked about for a long time now. We have the twenty eleven, twenty twenty Invision statement, sustainability is mentioned there. We have our Zero Waste Action Plan, two thousand and twelve, that's something we really look to from the SAB board and myself. Yeah, is that better? Excellent, and we use those, we use these documents as reference points of what are our goals, what are our ambitions for the town of Nederland? And I have to tell you that these things are really impactful as far as writing grants and being able to go back to an outside group and say, yes, we prioritize zero waste, I just wrote a grant for the Boulder County Zero Waste Opportunity. There's now a hundred thousand dollars in that pot, and being able to say that we've now had an initiative of zero waste for ten years feels really impactful when I'm going to ask for money for zero waste ambitions. We, Mayor Larson signed on to the Paris Climate Accord, we have our hundred percent renewable energy resolution. We have our Invision twenty thirty, which of those eight main categories, environmental sustainability is one of them. Right, how do we mitigate climate change, and we make that a focus priority? I really, I love and appreciate that, that mission statement. Then we've also got our Climate Emergency Resolution and our Energy Efficiency Day Proclamations, those are more, more recent things that we've done. So I just wanted to set the tone there, next slide. So, here comes the conversation of this position of sustainability coordinator. And when I first started on the SAB board as a volunteer in two thousand and seventeen, we were talking about a coordinator, how in the world were we going to fund it? We had so many ideas, so many thoughts, so many suggestions, and it took us until the twenty nineteen Sustainability Matching Grant to actually put an application in for a ten-hour-a-week sustainability coordinator. And that, that's a slippery slope, right, we are making progress, but Garrett McDaniel was hired in twenty twenty, and at the time, he was part-time for the Town of Lyons, and he was also a graduate student at Western Colorado University. So we had a ten-hour per week, twenty-four percent employee that was working almost a hundred percent of his time on sustainability initiatives in the front range, and also bigger conversations with his graduate program, so win for Nederland, right? Garrett continues, twenty twenty-one, it goes from ten hours a week to fifteen hours a week with an increased match from the town. So the Sustainability Matching Grant through Boulder County is a twenty-five percent match, so for fifteen thousand dollars, which is the minimum a town can receive in the county, you have to do a twenty-five percent match of financial match or in-kind. So in the past, we would do volunteer hours as our in-kind match, or town resources, space at the Public Works Building, for example. Now we move to twenty twenty-two, so this is where I step in, I'm, I'm new, right, in this position. Luckily, I've been working as a volunteer for a while, so I wasn't completely green in a lot of these conversations, but there's a lot going on, next slide. So I want to take you all through some of Garrett's accomplishments, you've been able to read this, but some of the key ones that are affecting what I'm working on now are the grant recipient for the EV chargers, right, we have two fast chargers that are going to be plugged in soon, right downtown Nederland, that's huge. We've got our zero-waste hauler metrics, that's really helpful, we've got data. We've also got our new green business program, that's something that was kind of handed to town in the interim, and, and luckily, town staff did a great job of holding the threads together, and we were able to kind of do a soft launch this past winter into the spring and summer. We've also got our Solarize campaign, which we're hoping to do another round of Solarize this coming summer. So for those of you that are not familiar, it's a bulk purchase, neighborhood-driven, increase the stoke for rooftop solar campaign. And the more people that sign up, the more kilowatts installed, the cheaper the cost. And then we've also got, you know, lots of code work that Garrett explored and has supported Nederland with, next slide. So what am I and SAB working on now? So just wanted to go through some of, this is what I, I work on, this is what my time is spent on, so I liaison with the SAB board. I will take initiatives from them and move forward with that. Also do the same for the Zero Waste Subcommittee, both groups are very motivated and very passionate about what they do and what they want to bring to our town. We've also got some current grants, I just applied for that Zero Waste Grant, as I mentioned to you all, the Zero Waste Subcommittee, their idea was an LED sign at the transfer station, Boulder County has partnered with us on that, and there was only eight applications this year, so it is looking very positive, like we are going to have an LED sign. We'll know for sure as of December, and it has to be approved by the county commissioners. We just, I just put an application last Friday for the CU Boulder ME and V program, and I, I don't know if I linked, maybe in their copy, I linked the previous project that was done through this group for Nederland was our hundred percent roadmap, so how do we actually get to a hundred percent renewable energy? And that's still on their website for their capstone project, so it's a project that they, they really love to share, and I'm excited and hopeful that they'll take on our electrification roadmap as well, as a kind of second project building from the first. We'll know more soon, they're going to have a work session in November, and then we'll have kind of a meet and greet in January, where we're actually supposed to go to. where we're actually supposed to go down and meet with students and kind of sell our project on the ground. We've got the Sustainability Matching Grant, of which $15,000 of my salary is funded through. We've got the Charge Ahead Colorado Grant. I've got three entities in town right now that I'm trying to, one is definitely going to put in the application. We've got two others. It'll be up to them if they're going to submit now or in the next few months when it opens again. And then we also have lots of zero waste grants. So the RREO grant has mini grants opportunities. And those can be from 5 to $25,000. And it's something that the Zero Waste Group is looking at right now. Next slide. So as far as energy, y'all know, you've you've seen the flyers, you've seen the newspaper articles, you've heard about the events. We've got the Community Solar Garden Campaign going with US Solar. I had a call from Louisville today asking about how the program's going for us and should they do one as well? And I said, heck, yes, please do. Let me know how we can support you. It's it's things like this Community Solar Garden Campaign where we're leaders. You know, we have other communities saying, okay, cool. Oh, all right, Netherland's doing it. I can reach out to them and talk to them? Absolutely. Okay, cool. And hopefully, that's a way to share our experience with them and to help an easier transition for them to make that commitment as well. Electrification, we've got this electrification plan. This is for EVs that's happening with Boulder County at the regional level. We've also got a local plan that's happening. This is through Partners in Energy, both the regional and the local. And there's some cool things happening with that. We've also got our solar ordinance. I was part of that conversation as well as Mayor Billy and Mayor Blake Moore as well. That'll be coming to y'all shortly. We've got our CU Capstone proposal, as I mentioned already. General efficiency measures, like the energy assessments that were just offered to Netherland residents over the last few weeks. We've also got a lot of action with PACE, Partners for a Clean Environment. Matt Hanen is fantastic. I just connected the Holiday Market with him, hoping that they can get some compost bins through that program. That is a first come, first served. And the pot of money is reset in the beginning of the year. So they do a dollar match per kilowatt, I believe, installed for businesses that qualify. But it's a first come, first served. So it can be up to $15,000 or a certain percentage of the product, or project. So there's really cool opportunities to partner with PACE and to do so early. Mayor Gable, do you have a question?
It's per watt, but yeah.
Per watt, yes, per watt. Thank you. And then we also have the Netherland Green Business. So we're hoping to launch that formally, starting probably in the next few months. That's been an interesting project because the state was first, it was their first launch this past year. And so there's been a lot of revisions done with the program and a lot of updates. Next slide. This is just some boards that I'm actively participating on. So the Housing Subcommittee, the Technical Review Committee, and then really trying to support with events and this zero waste side of things. And then just wanted to let you guys know, you know, on average, I have about 25 hours per month of meetings that I'm either regularly attending or specific to campaigns that are happening. And then I'm also really trying to orchestrate field trips and outreach events. Mayor Billy, myself, and Larry were just at the GO's Neighborhood in Arvada. And it's, it's just really exciting to learn what other communities are doing and then try to adopt and build from them and their experience. Next slide. And then just wanted to leave you all with these questions. You know, what do we want the future of sustainability to look like in Netherland? Where do we see it fitting in? How do we see prioritizing it? I know you all are tasked with lots of competing needs with limited resources. And I greatly respect all that you have on your plate. And I just wanted to come to you tonight to just reset and to share where we've been, where we are, and really brainstorm on where we want to go. I think that's all that I have. If you all would like to open up to public comment, I know Larry does have some things to share with you. So we could do that now or we could do that through public comment.
Go for it.
So I have one question, Erica. What is the LED sign for zero waste at the transfer station?
Great question. I was going to hot potato this to Larry.
Actually, Larry, can you, it's a tight, you can come up here and answer that question, then get into the zero waste. I just have one more question. I just have a thought that I thought about, which members of the, you know, I know it's a volunteer committee. And I try to often think about how sustainability just kind of cuts across everything, hopefully, or that's that's our goal. And where I've wondered whether, and this is just an idea, members of Sustainability Advisory Board possibly could be their own liaisons to each, we get to pick, have someone from each, one person from the board as a liaison to the other boards. Because I feel like then the voice is sustainability. You know, whether it's truly attending or just keeping a real pulse with direct communication with someone from that board so that we keep that lens of sustainability going in each board that may not necessarily have that in their windshield.
I think that's a brilliant idea, and I like that it's tangible. So we could ask members very easily to say, you know, what board would you like to liaison with? And if they make the meeting, that's great. If they can't, they follow up with minutes, you know, and report back to the SAB on a monthly basis. I think that's brilliant. Yeah, I'll take that to the SAB board at our next meeting.
Thanks. Yeah, maybe the chair of each meeting if, you know, it just has a, can be a resource for them if they can't make it.
Yeah.
The chair of each board, sorry.
There is the sustainability scorecard, too, that could be used.
Tell me more.
Every project. You've not, you've not seen it before?
I may very well have. I just don't.
Okay, well, it's a scorecard that evaluates the sustainability of projects, looking at environmental sustainability, economic and social. And we, it'd be great to be using that on even more of our projects. I know that we currently use it on some of them.
Thanks.
That's a great point, trustee Blake Moore. So from my experience as a volunteer on the SAB board, it was most often done when people requested it. So perhaps we could change that. I know Ron's definitely been to the SAB board and said, you know, could you all do a scorecard for my project? But it would be interesting to think about how we could actually incorporate that more easily into projects versus a kind of an add-on.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking like the project owner would fill it out with support from Sustainability Advisory Board. So because they know the project the best. So they would know the domain, but not necessarily the sustainability aspects.
That, yeah, that's a fantastic suggestion because it is a pretty cumbersome scorecard. And there are a lot of details. So great, great idea.
Ron mentioned earlier, one of my biggest concerns, and that's our water. Nothing will, will chuck us off faster than not having an adequate water supply. Is that something inside your docket or is it something you're looking at?
Yeah, so air, water, those are really the essentials and land. It's a great question. It's not something that I have been fully integrated in as far as the conversation in the town. I think it makes a lot of sense to be fully integrated into it. And that's a conversation that has come up, you know, can I attend executive sessions? Can I actually be part of these conversations or at least have a sustainability lens to it?
Good.
Thanks. Any questions from trustee Severs, Sterling or Corvallon for Erica before we hand it over to Larry?
Yeah, I think that, you know, we're going to be talking about our BOT goals later today. And one of the things that we've identified is that sustainability really is a cross-cutting aspect of all of those goals. Like it should have the lens sort of on those things. And so I guess I would ask, you know, not just you, Erica, but also, you know, SAB is when we're looking at those goals of like, okay, where, where can we help? Where can we, right, so that it's more, it's a focused sort of conversation. Yeah, I think we all see that there's just, there's a lot of projects going on. And how do we not fall into the trap of trying to do everything? You know, instead of like just having those three or four things that we're really focused on, the town is all focused on so that we can make sure that we nail those things and actually get them done.
Thank you, trustee Sterling. Yeah, I think that's a great point. And traditionally, SAB has had their own goals and their own work sessions. And so after tonight, it would be great to bring these goals back to the SAB and to see, you know, where are the interests? Where is the expertise on the board? And, you know, how do those overlap with what the BOT is focused on? So thank you for bringing that up.
Tanya or Jesse, any questions for Erica?
No, I just want to thank her. She's doing a great job. I just wonder when, when a house gets built, a new house gets built in Ned, besides the Boulder County Energy Codes and our new building codes, does town Ned require any sort of energy efficiency happening in the homes or is that something that we don't do?
Well, the new code pushes for ICC 2018, I think is where we're at. And I think, I can't remember, we were talking about it just on Friday on GOs, but I think the state's going to be moving us all to 2021 within the next couple of years. So the code itself, part of the code, the code has different sections in it, plumbing, electric, mechanical, building. One is energy, IECC, and that is at 2018, which was, which is pretty good. And that's our, that's our, that should be our ceiling. That should be our minimum.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, trustee Corvallon. So one thing to add to that is I did send an email about Crested Buttes electrification talk on this, it's tomorrow, the second. I'll have to look at the calendar. But if you all are interested, they're really leading the way and they're a cold climate. And they are moving to all-electric for all new buildings. And I personally, I think that's a really cool way for Netherland to go. So right now we need more information. And heat pumps are coming. They're coming fast and strong. But we still need to have more data as far as, you know, what is the reduction in production at colder climates and what that's going to look like for Netherland residents.
Did you, Erica, did you get the Frazier data on heat pumps?
I haven't, no.
So where would a good place for me as a homeowner go to find information about heat pumps? Is there anything on the webpage that links or is there any, like, anything to help consumers?
Well, I mean, right now, there's, I mean, I think one place to look ironically would be with XL. XL has some rebates in place. And then with IRA, there's going to be more tax incentives put in place for heat pumps. So it's becoming, actually, here's, here's a great website, DSIRE, so desire without the first E. DSIRE.usa, I think is what it is. Or DSIRAUSA.org, I think, or .gov, but DSIREUSA.
USA.
And that's going to really break down any kind of tax incentive or rebate program with a municipality, a utility, et cetera. And, but it's great, it's something we need to make more available. Boulder County has something, I can't remember it right now, too, but I think that program may be gone already. But XL Energy definitely has something in place as well.
Okay, thank you.
They have to meet demand-side management. They have to meet reductions in demand. XL is held to it by the PUC, so they have to, so one that that helps pay for these utility programs that they put on.
Yeah, great question, trustee Corvallon. It's coming. I don't know if there's a lot of great resources that speak specifically to Netherland. And I know there's a gap as far as installers. I've definitely heard that from other folks in sustainability in the county. But it's, it's a matter of time. The support like Mayor Billy mentioned, as far as the IRA and bringing funds, it's there. So it's going to really support this conversation. I also wanted to add, I'm part of an electrification cohort group that just recently formed in the front range. And so this is not just us kind of saying, where's the information? It's, it's kind of across the board. So stay tuned. More will come soon.
Yes, thanks. Anything else, Jesse? If not, maybe we'll switch over to Larry. And it is, by the way, DSIREUSA.org.
Thank you.
You gotta get real close to that little black microphone, the big one, just for looks.
Good evening, folks.
There's a small, the small.
The small one, it's the one that matters. Good evening, folks. Larry Tacaday, 902 Klineig Avenue. And I'm here tonight as a member of the Sustainability Advisory Board and also the chair of the board's Zero Waste Subcommittee. I'd like to talk about that briefly. But first, I just want to congratulate you. Just sitting back here, listening to the conversation that I just heard, the back and forth between you. I'm not sure you realize how sophisticated you are. So I just want to convey that to you. Congratulations. The brilliant range of questions that I just heard and the comments. And then we have the mayor giving detailed advice on heat pumps. Wow. So just very impressive. And when we were at GO's the other day in Arvada afterwards, they were asking us, how do you, how do you do it up there? Because Arvada has nothing like what we have. Arvada is a big city. So I just wanted to pass that on to you. And thank you for that. I wanted to say a few words about Zero Waste Subcommittee and some exciting times that lay ahead. And I just, I just thought it would be worthwhile passing on to you one example of both the support we're getting from our sustainability coordinator, Erica, without whom we would not be able to do the kind of work that we have been doing. So, and I've, I've served in a lot of boards in my time. And I know the difference between having somebody who has a staff-type role to play as support and not having that. Well, we have that. And so we are incredibly grateful. And I just wanted to pass it on to you. It's made a huge difference in our work. One of the differences it has made is it has allowed us to open up our Subcommittee, not just to citizens of Netherland, who are very knowledgeable and caring people, but also people from around Boulder County, including officials of Boulder County Government and also of EcoCycle. We've developed a wonderful relationship with EcoCycle down in Boulder. We look to them for guidance and support, and they are offering it to us. Our collaboration with Boulder County has been wonderfully fruitful. They're coming to our meetings. We're now holding regular live meetings at the community library every Wednesday at 1:00 in the community room. They're coming regularly and they are following through on their actions. And as a result, I just wanted to share with you a few exciting things that are going to be happening. Erica mentioned the LED sign, which Karen asked about. And that's not a done deal. We have an inside loop, so to speak, with Boulder County, and there aren't that many grants. But I'm, I have a lot of experience in having failed grant applications. And so I, I'm backing off on this. We may not get it. But if we did get it, it, it could be very interesting. For one thing, it would be highly supportive of the town and all of the town's efforts. There would be, this is part of the collaboration I'm talking about. We've already worked this out with the Boulder County people if we were to get this sign, which has got to be big and outdoors-proof and good-looking and can, and able to convey all kinds of interesting video information along with just basic signage. So it could be a year-round project conveying all kinds of information about proper waste disposal there at the transfer station for everybody, not just for town residents. Remember, we're talking about, what, a support area of 5,000 people? It's a big deal. So we're so excited, but I'm, I'm trying to be careful about it, but we'll see. However, there's two other things I wanted to mention to you briefly that look like they are going to happen. And one of those is going to be what the county is referring And one of those is going to be what the county is referring to as a pole barn. And I think they literally mean that. And I actually haven't seen drawings or photos yet. But they're, they're at the level of size and placement of a very serious pole barn, which would be for reuse of items that people could bring and drop off there inside the pole barn. And that's what it'd be for. And they, they figured out some sort of rotation cycle to keep it clean and, and up to date. And from the zero-waste perspective, we just find this fabulous. And we've been highly supportive of this. We're already thinking that if we get our LED sign, we put it on one of the walls because it would be over in the far right as you come into the yard. The other thing, though, I want to mention, and this is what gets me really excited, is what you might call a compost nerd. I'm a compost nerd. I've been doing it at my home for 25 years, my backyard. I know all about composting. It turns out from greenhouse gas reduction standards, this turns out to be a big deal. It's not only an important source of solid waste that needs to be turned around and turned into a recycled loop product, but it also would help the environment tremendously, particularly in methane reduction, one of the big terrible gases. All right, so the county, and again, our collaboration with the county's been kind of important on this. They are now committed to putting a big facility to do the composting there at the transfer station. So there's no longer just in these trailers that they're, they're carrying down. When they, they're talking about next spring, warm weather, so we're thinking next summer, perhaps. They have told us that the, the capacity for this new compost facility, we will be able to compost all of Netherland. I mean, all of Netherland. I mean, all of the residents, the schools, the businesses, Eldora, everything. All right, so, so already, we're starting to get excited about forward-thinking about, well, let's see, if we actually have this capacity there at the transfer station, how do we get that waste from people's houses and homes and businesses to that station? And we, we realize that's our next challenge. But this is the kind of challenge that we're excited to have. So I'm going to stop right there. I just wanted to share this with you. I want to thank you again for your energy and your intelligence. And unless you have any questions, I'm finished and.
I had a question just about the composting you were talking about. Are you saying the transfer station in Netherland is going to have a larger container? I don't, didn't quite follow.
Yeah, they, they call it an impeller facility. And there are different sizes, and there's a lot of details to be worked out in terms of wiring and in terms of turnaround time. But the idea is that the, the composting is going to be happening there instead of having to be taken down in those trailers.
I got you. It won't get hauled down to something. It's going to just take place somewhere in the transfer station.
And it's going to be big.
So.
Can they expand on that property? They own the land or on it?
So, we're, we have, we're still in the early, we're so excited about this that we're trying not to push them too hard. And they're working on it. And so it's like, and this is, the collaboration with them is so interesting. There are some things that they, they want forward movement, like the LED sign. They were like, tell us more, and we're sort of taking, but on the, that's so complicated. So for a long time, we were just talking about types of facilities. And some of our people were working with them. And then we had power issues and et cetera. So I don't have good answers. And if Erica does, I'd invite her to.
We don't need to dig too deep into it. I was just curious, yeah.
But, but, but the message I want to send to you is that we are getting these strong, strong, positive signals from them that it is going to happen. And I, that's what's getting us excited.
Oh, I was wondering if you would ever be willing to share tips for backyard composting? That I've always been afraid of bears getting into it, so I'd bring it to the transfer station. Do you think in the future, maybe at one of the meetings or something, you can invite the public for like an informative, informative presentation? Or just even like a PDF that you send out?
Well, we can do, we can do anything online that, that we're asked to. But as a matter of fact, thank you for bringing this up. We are actually, December 10th and 11th, there's a holiday affair that's happening here. It's an annual event. Last year, we held a very nice display that dealt exactly with what you're talking about.
Oh, good.
Backyard composting. And we're going, we're going to do it again this year. And so if, we're, we're going to be there with.
I'll be there. Okay, I'll look for it.
Thank you. Another brilliant question. I can't believe it. It's amazing.
Thank you.
Jesse or Nicole, any questions?
No, just appreciate all the hard work.
Yeah, me too. I'd just be in support of moving towards the most progressive energy efficiency building code we could that's available as soon as possible, just putting that out there.
Thank you. I think if there's nothing else, we can, I want to thank Erica and Larry for joining us and spreading their, giving, sharing their passion with us.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
So, thank you very much. Now, we're going to move from informational items into action items. We have three action items tonight. Appointment to the Planning Commission, appointment, we have one opening in the Planning Commission. And then appointment to the Board of Zoning Adjustment. We have two openings and one alternate, so three openings total. And then a right-of-way vacation request. So let's start with 7.1, Appointment to the Planning Commission. We know that one person has withdrawn their application today, so we have three applicants here today. Timothy Dugan, sorry if I say your name wrong, Timothy Dugan, David McElvein, and Ryan. I gotta expand it. Ryan, it's not even hard to say. I just can't see it. There you go. Ryan Villaln. So how about if we, what we'd like to do is hear from those of you who are here or online. And then we'll ask questions and go from there. So let's start with, since Steve pulled his application, let's start with Timothy Dugan.
So I don't think Timmy's on right now. He's going to work on joining.
He's going to work on joining. Okay, let's, then let's go to Dave, Dave McElvein. McElvein, please.
Hi, Dave McElvein, 88 Sundance Circle. I'm applying to the, be appointed to the Planning Commission. I feel the town currently faces a number of growing pains right now. We've, I'm, I'm one of the people that is part of the influx that has come in in the last few years. I've been here almost six years now. But the town continues to face more challenges. We have issues with our infrastructure. We have issues with people, more people wanting to come in and use basically our postage stamp even harder. And we need to plan carefully for that. We also need to plan sustainably so we can make sure that we're being efficient with our resources, including our water. We also need to make sure that we're being financially sustainable as well because we, we only have a certain amount of land to work with, with which to generate revenue for the town and the projects. We need to make sure that the projects contribute to the, to the growth of the town and the budget so we can achieve some of the goals that we're looking for. So anyway, I was part of the Wild Bear Building, I was the Building Committee Chair for a while, and I helped get it through the paper phase, you know, now that they're onto the digging phase. But I, I helped work on that for a number of years. And I have also renovated my own home in here in, in Netherland. So I'm quite familiar with the, the building process and, and how all that works. In past careers, I was a builder and a real estate agent. So I've seen, I've seen the business from a number of different sides. So anyway, I hope you will favorably consider my application for Planning Commission.
Thanks, David. Actually, what we'll do is we'll probably just ask each of you, starting with you, some questions right after you talk with us.
Okay, so it sounds like you have some experience with land use surveys. And what about municipal code?
Not from a governmental point of view, but from a, I should say, a user point of view. Obviously, I've, when I've worked on building projects, we've had to make sure that our, our buildings and plans stay within code parameters.
Okay, great. Have you attended a Planning Commission meeting?
I have not.
Okay. And then there's two subcommittees on the Planning Commission right now. One is to develop regulations for livestock within town. And the second one is being reformed to help staff put together an ordinance on off-street parking requirements within the central business district. And I'm just wondering how you would approach, if you were on one of those subcommittees, what approach would you take to developing the regulations?
Should you pick one?
Sure.
Okay, I'll go with livestock. I know that there, there are many hobbyist farmers in town, and keeping livestock is a, is a very popular thing. We also need to balance it with the fact that sometimes livestock can become a nuisance. You know, if you have chickens or roosters that are making all sorts of noise, all sorts, you know, early, early in the morning, that can be an issue. So I think we need to allow people to have the freedom to, to possibly do hobby farming and keep some livestock, but obviously keep it within certain parameters. It can't just be a free-for-all.
And how would you decide on those parameters?
I would look at existing codes that we have on the books. I know that all codes don't necessarily work in all places. So we might have to talk with the people that are, that are looking to utilize these codes and find out what's, what works with them, what works with their neighbors as well, because their neighbors are also impacted, and see if we can come up with an equitable solution for everyone.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, cool. Any other questions for David? None in the room. How about Jesse and, or Trustee Severs, Sterling and Corvalan? Any questions for David McElvein?
Nope.
I've got one.
Thank you, David.
How many positions are we?
Awesome. Now, thanks, Tom. So we have one opening now in, in the, in the Planning Commission where I used to be, in the Planning Commission. So there's one seat open in the Planning Commission. There are two seats and an alternate position in the BZA. And the person in the Planning Commission could also go into the BZA, correct me if I'm wrong, because that, I was in both. And, and we have to have ordinance or, we have to have someone from the Planning Commission on the BZA as a member. We presently have an alternate as well.
I don't know if that's a, if that's a requirement.
I can't remember.
I think it is allowed, but I don't believe it to be a requirement.
Okay, so, and so, and I would say, since we have the openings in the, on the BZA, that to be chosen for the PC would not exclude you from being on the BZA.
Correct.
Yeah, it was, it was my impression that I actually applied for both. I, I think only my application for the BZA came through. I did apply for the Planning Commission as well. I'm not sure what happened to the email.
We have that noise now, so we're in good shape.
Great. But I did, I did apply for both positions.
Yeah, thank you.
I just sent them their, the application. I don't, little mix-up. They, they are in possession of it now.
It's not on the agenda, but, but I know when we first talked to you that that was your plan.
Just quickly for clarification, one member of the BZA may be a member of the Planning Commission.
And we have, have one already. It's Roger Cornell.
He's an alternate, though.
He's an alternate. So that allows, because him and I have been on it together for four years. Yeah. Both, both. Any other questions for David?
Yes, I've got a couple of questions. Hi, David. So what would be, I have a couple of questions, but what would be sort of a high-profile issue that you're looking forward to tackling and why?
I think one of the issues I would look forward to tackling is coming up with adequate housing or increasing the housing stock within town and doing it in a responsible way. As we all know, the cost of housing is, is really super high, especially here in Ned. And we need to, I'm, I'm sure that if we came up with less expensive housing, that it would get snapped up right away. And then we'd probably end up with the same problem right all over again. But what we need to do is we need to find housing, affordable housing, specifically for our municipal employees. I know that our police officers, our firefighters, teachers, people that work in town works, many of them can't afford to live in this municipality. It's just too expensive. Or their jobs don't pay enough or don't allow us to live here. But I think I would like to see if we could find a solution to help our municipal employees and people that, those who work for local government to be able to live where they work.
And you had said that you want to do it in a responsible way. So what does that look like? What does that sound like?
I'd like to do it in a way that obviously is environmentally responsible, energy-efficient. That's a, that's a very big issue these days. The cost of energy is, just keeps going up and up. And building in a energy-efficient way is, is one of those cry-once problems. You know, you, you pay for it upfront, but it just pays dividends for decades down the road.
I got it. One of the things that the Planning Commission gets to do is to advise on the zoning for any land that is annexed, that the BOT may decide or, or that goes through the annexation process. And there's been a couple of ideas of, you know, maybe it takes the zoning of the adjacent property. What are your thoughts on that?
I think it's, it's a very hot-button subject right now. There are a lot of very passionate voices on both sides of annexation. I think it's going to take a cooperative effort between the town and the landowner. I, I don't think it can be done by, by, by force. But we're going to have to come up with a cooperative solution should, should landowners want to join the town and have their, have their land annexed and have a desire to change the zoning, we're going to have to find a way to work with them to come up with an equitable, equitable solution for everyone.
Okay, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from trustees? If not, thanks, David. I appreciate it.
Thanks for stepping up.
Yeah, thanks very much for being here. And so next, we'd see, is Timothy Dugan, and that's, tell me if I'm saying your name.
I don't think he has.
Okay.
Audio access yet?
Okay. How about Ryan? Ryan Villaln, please tell us how to say your last name. The first part of the training is learning how to use these things.
I'm Ryan Villaln. My wife and I moved here about a year ago and absolutely fell in love.
Miranda.
This better? Yeah, they're, they're very sensitive. You gotta almost.
Yes. You gotta like eat it. Thank you.
Figure it out. Yeah, we, we moved here about a year ago, absolutely fell in love with the area. And I've been looking for a way that I could give it back to this community that's.
Timmy, Timmy, are you able to mute on your end? For some reason, I can't mute you. He's on though now.
Cool.
Hey.
Okay, he's muted.
Okay, go ahead, Ryan.
But this community's brought me a lot of happiness, and I wanted to find a way that I could get back to the city of Ned. My area of expertise has been in residential construction and the development of communities. Most recently, I've been working on an affordable housing project in Denver, which has kind of limited my time and what I was able to give up here now that that project's over. I want to bring that area of expertise to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Ned's a very unique place. And in the places I've gone, the places I've visited, visited and lived, I appreciate the places that have public transportation, that are walkable, that have affordable housing, that bring in different groups of people that also have different mindsets and everything that comes along with that. And like some of the topics that we've touched on so far tonight, I know Ms. Blackburn mentioned that there's a Subcommittee for Parking. And most recently, the place I was living before used. And most recently, the place I was living before, you saw a lot of places getting torn down to accommodate more parking. And it was a lot of asphalt, a lot of, it took away from the character of where I was living and it made it seem more just like everywhere else that you just kind of pass by on a highway. And I don't want to see that happen in Ned. And so I'd like to contribute in whatever way I can to keeping that uniqueness and what makes this, this area special.
Thanks, Ryan. Appreciate it. Any questions for Ryan from the trustees?
Hello, Ryan. I've been involved with the planning commission for three years. About three years, two as a commissioner and then about a year as a trustee. And a lot of the work there is, involves reading land surveys and also working with municipal code that has to do with land use. And so I'm wondering if you could speak to your experience in those two areas?
So currently, I'm working in Boulder. I work for a company where we build ADUs and get them installed in people's backyards in Boulder. And so it's working with that municipal code to, and it's always a fine line, especially in Boulder proper of not upsetting the neighbors next door and meeting the proper codes and, you know, et cetera, et cetera, and everything that goes along with it. But like what was mentioned before tonight is we have a very limited amount of space and even more of a limited amount of space that provides a good quality building site for the kind of things that we're looking to do. Affordable housing stops being affordable if you're building into the side of a mountain and everything that comes along with it. So it's taking advantage of the land that we have and using it to its best use.
Have you attended a planning commission meeting?
I have not.
Okay, that's all my questions. Thanks.
I'll go ahead and ask the same questions I did to the previous applicant. So when you think about some high-profile issues, what would, what would be one that you'd hope to tackle?
So for the last six months, I've been making the drive to Denver because I really wanted to work on an affordable housing project because I do see that as being one of the biggest issues that Ned is going to face in the coming years and is currently facing. I'd, I'd like to focus on, focus on that.
And how would you go about, like, what are the important things that you're thinking of with affordable housing?
In the places I've traveled to that I think do a good job of it, you see a lot of high-density housing where you're building up, not necessarily so much out. You don't have the big backyards. You don't have the expansive driveways and then, you know, garages on the side, et cetera, et cetera. And I think that downtown Ned does have areas where if it were zoned for that high-density housing and there was some sort of incentive to get a builder to take advantage of that, I think that might be a solution for the, or not a full solution, but it could at least help contribute to the solution.
Okay, and like my previous question, you know, with the planning commission being able to provide input on the zoning or annexation, and there's been different proposals taking on the zoning of adjacent properties or whatnot, what is your take on that?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
So for annexation, the annexation of land, there have been various proposals of, you know, once that land is annexed, it might take on the zoning of an adjacent type of property so that, you know, sort of the zoning stays the same or whatnot. Did you have any input or thoughts on that issue?
I think ultimately, the zoning of any annexed properties need to benefit the town and the citizens of Ned to its best ability. And kind of going back to my previous statement of we, we need more housing. And whatever's going to contribute to that is, I think, how that problem should be addressed.
Okay, thank you. No more questions?
Thanks. Thanks, Nicole. Ryan, or any other questions for Ryan from the trustees?
I have a question. How, how would you balance, you know, the idea that we need more housing with keeping the kind of quaint quality that we love of Nederland?
So affordable housing typically goes hand-in-hand with very rectangular structures, very boxy structures. And of course, that conflicts with making this a unique place to live. I love the style of brownstones, you know, a row of houses that all have unique characteristics to them, but at the same time, take advantage of shared walls, take advantage of being in highly dense spaces that you wouldn't see in purely single-family residential homes. And so that would be my, that there's not a perfect solution to it because typically those ideas conflict. It's hard to make custom properties, custom houses with affordability in mind. But I think that that gets us as close as possible to reaching that solution.
Oh, thank you. Also, when you were working with, in Denver, was that a private developer? Were you working with a municipality that was doing it themselves?
It's kind of confusing, but it was a private developer that was working through the affordable housing project.
Have you ever worked with municipalities that are trying to own it themselves? Is that, I'm not saying that's what Ned should do. I'm just curious if that's been something you've worked with before?
I've not personally, and I think that that would be pretty tough to get the, to get the funding for. Typically, the, the government wants to see, that they want to see somebody that has experience in building ADUs. So if anything, the city would have to partner up with somebody that's done something like that before to get that funding.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Any more questions for Ryan?
Yeah, one. You, you've been around long enough to see how constrained we are land-wise. You, on a planning commission, probably be wading into the, through any issue of annexation. What are your thoughts there and how much have you looked at this before?
Real quickly, can I just, do you understand what we're talking about when we say annexation? It's not a problem if you don't, but just specifically annexation. If you don't, I'll give you a quick explanation.
I did not.
Okay, yeah, I had a feeling. And that is fine. I don't know is a great answer for someone in any position. So annexation is, as we're talking about, is, so the town of Ned takes up so much real estate and it's surrounded by adjacent land that's outside the town. And, and annexation would be that some of this adjacent land, and then how this works, and I only came to understand this for the last couple of years, is it's not the town decides to grab it. It's that that person that owns the land decides, I would like to be annexed into the town for a variety of reasons. And then the town would decide, you know, is that in the town's interest? There's things we're working through about how we will or would, will decide those kind of things. But it would be the person that owns the property adjacent to town would want to enter into town and become part of the town so that the town boundary then goes farther and surrounds them. They get access to some of the town, you know, water and sewers, say, and pay taxes towards the town. But that's what we're talking about. So what we're talking about specifically is that there are, there's projects, you know, things that, these things come up from time to time where people want to be annexed and there's even projects pending that, that people really want to come into town. So that, that is the context of what Tom's asking you. So Tom may be asking again, sorry.
Tom, and then I've got one more after that, but go ahead, Ryan.
Do you mind asking me your question again?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Following what Billy just said, we're going to be faced with some questions on applications coming in to extend the town limits, contiguous town limits. How, do you have any feelings about that? And would you be prepared to adjudicate on it?
If the question is if I would be 100% against expanding the town limits, I would have to say no. But I also don't know enough about any specific projects that would be looking to be annexed into the city. I think stuff like that should be evaluated on a case-by-case basis. And if what's being looked to annex into Ned fits the criteria of Ned, it's something that's going to bring in more dollars to the city that can help fund some of these projects that we want to do in the town, then those are all things that need to be considered. But more of a case-by-case basis and not necessarily an all-out, no.
Great. One last question. You've been working in the, you've been building ADUs in Boulder County. That's been a hot-button issue up here too, as you've probably seen. Does, would you see a conflict of interest or would you be able to, I guess, would you be able to make judgments that, that aren't conflicted?
I ran a homebuilding company for two years. I have no interest in ever doing it again. I, I moved up here because I enjoy skiing. I enjoy hiking. I enjoy. And so the company I work for has no interest in building in the mountains. He's tried it before and he doesn't enjoy dealing with the different complexities that come with building up here. And.
Having built up here, I share his same concerns.
You display sanity. Good for you.
But to answer your question, I have no interest in building ADUs in Nederland.
Thanks, Ryan. Appreciate it very much. And Timothy Dugan? And it sounds like you go by Timmy, but please introduce yourself and tell us why you wanted to be on the planning commission.
Hey there. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Cool. Yeah, thanks for considering my application with the planning commission. My name is Timmy Dugan. I've been a resident of Nederland for arguably my, my whole life. But for real, I built the house up here in 2011. But yeah, I grew up here on the ski team and everything. So yeah, Nederland and Boulder are both, you know, really, really close to my heart. Now I am a Realtor. I work at RE/MAX of Boulder and I do quite a bit of business in the Nederland and mountain area as well as Boulder proper area. I served on the planning commission earlier for four years from, what was it, 2014 to 18, I believe. So I do have previous extensive experience with the, the planning commission in the past, so.
So I, we ready for questions?
If, yeah, if that's, if there's nothing else, Timmy, we're going to head and have trustees, we'll ask you some questions.
Sure, yep.
Just like, real quick, can you make them bigger by any chance? There we go.
Hi, Timmy. This is Karen Blakemore. I won't ask you if you have, hey, I won't ask you if you have experience with the land use surveys or municipal code since you've been on the planning commission already. But I'm wondering how you would approach one of these ordinances that the planning commission has been tasked to develop and then present to the board of trustees, which would have the final approval on them. One is about keeping livestock in the, in the town. And the second one is minimum parking requirements for the central business district. Right now, we have a moratorium on any park, minimum parking requirements within the central business district. So staff will be putting together an ordinance with help from the planning commission. And so how would you, how would you approach one of those ordinances?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Great question. Starting with parking first. My main concerns offhand would be two things. One, you know, where exactly is the building? What are the constraints that we're working with as far as parking? You know, some, some small businesses in town might easily provide 12 spaces and some will struggle to provide one easily. And the, the ones that would struggle to meet that requirement, that might be at extreme financial cost. So I don't think we want to be in the place where we're basically preventing people from, you know, being able to run a small business in town just because it costs them $100,000 to put in the required amount of parking. So, you know, given those two things, obviously we have to take it on a case-by-case basis with, with that. But yeah, those would kind of be my, my two concerns with regard to, to parking. And then livestock, again, I mean, you know, if my neighbor has a llama, a singular llama or something, like I probably don't have any problem with that, but depends what, what the person has in mind. You know, if you're in medium-density zoning in downtown Nederland and you want to have four cows at your house, but you know, that's probably, probably a different story. But I think that's a much easier one to even take on a case-by-case basis. Well, and I don't even know if you have to do that. You can, just across the board, say, you know, these animals are allowed and these aren't, so.
Okay, thank you.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, it did. It gave, gave me an idea of some of the considerations that you would make if you were on the subcommittee, helping to develop those ordinances. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
More questions for Timmy?
Yeah, so Timmy, like the, you know, other applicants, what would be a high-profile issue you'd hope to tackle being on the planning commission?
High-profile issue? Well, I mean, as a Realtor, obviously, housing in all aspects is, is close to my heart. One of the big components of the Ned Comprehensive Plan and Vision 2030 now is sort of optimizing our many infill opportunities. So I would love to have, you know, any, any opportunities in that regard via, via highlight of my, my term on the, on the planning commission.
And are there particular, oh, sorry, keep going.
Oh, no, you're fine. As well as, you know, the annexation is a, is a hot topic and sticky subject. And, you know, I think there's good reasons for it and I think there's bad reasons for it. And like the, the previous applicant said, you know, I think that's a very good thing to take on it case-by-case basis. You know, if you've got multiple property owners right next to town, you're annexing that in and it gives more of a tax base for town. And these property owners might have an opportunity to hook into the town utilities, which gives me more money for the town as well as just more, more, a more efficient and environmentally friendly situation. You know, those are annexation situations I would probably consider more than one, you know, one property with the idea of adding lots of density on the outside or on the, the edge of town, which I think kind of goes, goes against the vision of 2030 and Comprehensive Plan. But that's, it's kind of a, kind of a paradox between that and the need for, the need for additional housing.
Got it. And so when you said, you know, you'd take particular look at the infill opportunities, are there certain properties that you've already identified that would support the infill for, you know, for affordable housing to be built?
I mean, I, I know the town shop site there by the fire department has been, you know, formally earmarked for, for affordable housing at, at some point, although I don't think there's any specific plan for that on the table or anything at, at the moment. But that obviously would be a prime spot for, for consideration and probably the first place I would start from.
Okay. And what would be some things that you would consider? I know you had said like, you know, the tax base, bringing in taxes and everything, but what else would you consider if it were property outside of the city limit or like, you know, right adjacent, right in the, let's say, the central business district or old town?
Sorry, if it was a, if it was an infill opportunity in the middle of town, you're saying?
No, like if it was one of those properties like you were talking about outside, not such, not like right in, in town, what would be kind of your decision-making criteria to consider whether or not something like that would be for the benefit of town? to consider whether or not something like that would be, um, for the benefit of town?
Yeah, I mean, in, in a situation like that, I think you have different, um, kind of major factors to consider, like the, the additional traffic that's going to be going by this formerly maybe quiet area, um, wildlife patterns. We, we all know that, um, all the different kinds of wildlife, you've, even the middle of town is, um, as, uh, corridors for, for their travel. So, um, you know, that can certainly have a big impact. And then just bringing the utilities in. I mean, I, I know our town is, is stressed as, as it is, um, with our, our utility system. So, um, you know, having to extend the water, gas and electric out to maybe a less efficient place, you know, we, we just have to consider if that's environmentally friendly and if it's cost-effective, um, especially if our, our goal is to create affordable housing. If we have to go to the end of the earth and up on top of a mountain and a rock to, to build, um, additional housing units, that might not be nearly as cost-effective as, as doing something in the middle of town.
Got it. And then like the other applicants, the question of annexation and zoning, planning commission obviously, is to provide input on the zoning. Do you have any thoughts on whether the zoning needs to reflect adjacent parcels, um, and that annexed land would take on, you know, that adjacent zoning or do you have other ideas, um, on that?
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it seems common sense to me that, um, you know, an annexed parcel would, would take on the zoning or at least of the, the closest, you know, the next notch up or down zoning of, of, uh, the closest district there. Um, for it to be completely the opposite, you know, I, I think that, that's kind of a slap in the face as a, as a landowner where, you know, you've maybe invested everything you have on this piece of property and, um, and then they go and completely change the zoning right next to you and that completely changes your use of the land and, uh, the, the value of the land and the value, you know, even the intrinsic value of the land. Um, so I, I think that's a big problem is when, when some, or that is the big problem, when something is annexed and then the zoning becomes something completely different than the adjacent zone currently is, you know?
Okay, thank you. No more questions.
Well, this is Tanya, just to keep on the same thread, I want to keep talking about it too much, but with that change of zoning, if an applicant wanted to be annexed in the town, would you think it's best to have a town-wide vote to establish if that's allowed or just allow the planning commission and the board of trustees to make those decisions? When, when we were talking about a large annexation or one that changes the zoning of the area? I mean, how would you feel the best way would be to be dealt with? Would it be, uh, the town of Nederland residents vote to say if they would like that or not? Or would you think it's best to allow the planning commission and the trustees to make that choice?
Yeah, I, I understand the question. Um, I, forgive my ignorance, I, I've been kind of out of touch with, um, the inner workings of the town the last few years because of some personal and health, uh, or family and health stuff going on, but all, all that's behind us now. Um, but, uh, bottom line, um, I'm not sure where we are at with like the inter, intergovernmental agreement with the county in terms of, um, what is required to happen if, if we're considering an, an annexation.
Well, I think currently, uh, there's talk of letting that lapse in Nederland and creating their own annexation policy.
Right.
And when we create their own annexation policy, some of the choices that we're trying to make would be at which point do we trigger an election, um, you know, a local election to, to vote if this annexation should be allowed or not? Is there ever a time that it should be allowed to be decided by the residents of Nederland or should something like that simply be decided by the trustees and the planning commission? Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, perfect. Thank you.
Right ordinance, we could put something that says if the zoning changes, then it needs to be approved by the voters of Nederland or if it's 10 acres, you know, or we could not put that in at all and that gives the power completely to the planning commission and the trustees. I'm just curious, like, what you think is the best choice in that?
Um, well, they're kind of two different questions, I guess. Um, one is if a property can be annexed at all, if everybody agrees to that, and two, what the zoning of that newly annexed parcel will be. Um, I mean, I, I think across the board, obviously, it needs to go in front of the, the planning commission and the board of trustees first and then through that whole vetting process, um, yeah, I, I support a town, a town-wide vote at, at that point, but obviously not before it, it goes through an intense vetting process with the, the town and the EDP.
Yeah, there's a whole checklist, yeah, of criteria. Okay, I appreciate it. I guess my other question is, um, you were on it for a while, you stopped because your life got really busy and do you just want to join because you like to kind of be knowledgeable what's going on in town? That's the best way or is it just like a politics is kind of something you're interested in or?
Yeah, um, I mean, selfishly, as, as a Realtor, I think it helps me be, uh, much more professional and provide a better service to my clients, um, especially in, uh, my personal business and my passion is doing business in the Netherlands area and the mountains. Um, so being intimately involved at the, at the PC level, um, helps, helps me do that. And then it, it, it goes the other way, too. You know, I'm, I'm sort of boots-on-the-ground out there with people and their, um, personal private issues and property and, um, hearing what their struggles are maybe with, with the town or more, more often the county. Um, and I, I think I can take, take that experience and, and knowledge back, um, in a positive way to the, to the PC as well.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Tanya. Thanks, Timmy. Any other questions for Timmy? From the trustees? Jesse?
I don't have a question for Timmy, but I'm looking at the, um, BCA and we have two openings on the BCA, is that right?
I'm, I'm gonna make kind of a just general announcement at the end on that. Um, so I think at this point, we've heard from all of the three, um, applicants, since he pulled out his application. So I'd like to open up for public comments. Again, um, identify yourself, relationship to Netherlands, and you have three minutes to, um, give your comment regarding these three applicants. Doesn't appear there's anyone in the room that, that wants to make a comment? So is anyone online care to make a comment regarding the P, PC appointment? Here you go, and I'll bring it back in and we'll, and we'll kind of closing, uh, discussion with the trustees. So what I will say, um, Karen, thanks, I intend to say this, so I just, just a reminder to all the applicants, um, present and virtual and, and Steve as well, um, I guess, I guess Steve's gonna shoot for the BCA, but, um, so we have two positions, two seats on the BCA and, and one alternate, so three total positions on the BCA and one on the planning commission. If you get appointed to planning commission, you could still express interest in after our break, when we come back to talk about BCA appointments. Um, well, unless we somehow do that before, but, but, um, so I just wanted to make that clear that I would encourage you, how about if I even say it that way? If you don't get chosen for, uh, on the planning commission or if you do, that you consider the BCA as well.
How often does the BCA meet?
Um, it, it is, is scheduled generally to meet quarterly, so once, once every three months and then, but it kind of ends up being more on-demand, um, like November, I think we'll have two meetings because we have at least two things.
Three applications?
Three applications. So, and what's kind of neat about the BCA is it's your own, it's quasi-judicial, you are your own kind of separate wing, like things go to the BCA, they never, they don't come to the BOT, they don't go to the planning commission generally, they go to the BCA and the BCA hears it, rules on it, maybe has folks come back if needed, but then makes a final decision and that's, that's, that's the final decision. So it's interesting. And, and if you want to get more involved with town government at all, you learn a lot in any of these opportunities. I would recommend getting involved and then from there, it's a good springboard. So, um, so thanks.
Uh, did, um, you mentioned that Steve withdrew from this, did he withdraw from both?
No, Steve is interested in the BCA. He withdrew today from the planning commission.
How, how are we gonna vote on the planning commission? Should we each?
So, so, so I, I did open it up for public comment and, and there were none, so I brought it back. Um, I think we should have a discussion and I'd like to hear from everybody out there, all the virtual trustees, um, as we discuss this part and then, um, and then I think, you know, we'll see if we just go to a motion to one person, kind of like we did before with appointing a trustee? Um, how about folks out there, um, trustees, Corvallon, Severs and Sterling, any, any comments, questions or?
Um, I like all the candidates, I think they're all, I think, you know, we wouldn't do poorly having any one of them as a member, but I would personally slightly leaning towards Timmy Dugan just because of his past experience and his long-time residence in the town of Netherlands and probably has a pretty good pulse on what people think because he deals with so many people with real estate. So there's just a few things that have me leaning that way, but like I said, I, I don't, I don't think anybody's gonna be a problem. I think everyone's great.
Uh, I would agree. I mean, they're all three strong candidates. Um, you know, Tanya already talked about Timmy's previous experience, that's got a plus. Both David and Timmy's real estate experience, um, would be a plus. Ryan has, um, been that builder, sort of that boots-on-the-ground type of person, um, built ADUs, um, kind, you know, the, based off how he articulated his experience, he's, he's kind of knows some of those ins and outs that happened with just the process of that. And so I think that brings, um, potentially, um, unique, uh, expertise and, um, so I'd say I'm slightly more leaning towards Ryan. But again, all three great candidates. I don't hear anything.
Feel like we're not hearing anything.
Can you guys hear us?
Can you hear us now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, now, yes.
Okay, Jesse, uh, trustee Severs, can you, are you out there? Can you tell us what you're thinking?
Yeah, um, I, I, I served on the planning commission with Timmy. I was, I enjoyed it. Um, I felt like Timmy brought a lot of good thoughtful, um, contributions there. Uh, I, again, I've, uh, just to echo Nicole and, um, Tanya, I feel like all three are are great candidates and would be fortunate to have any of them on there. And, um, I, I really like, oh, kind of Ryan's passion, uh, for the, you know, the affordable housing and just, um, you know, just kind of the, is, his fresh take on the, um, on just moving here and kind of being fired up on that and I appreciate that and the ADU background, I think could really benefit, uh, future kind of, um, opportunity for us to create more housing here in, in town. Um, yeah, and also like Dave McElvein and, you know, had a, I've had a chance to collaborate a little bit with him on the Wild Bear stuff, so I think all three candidates are, are really great and, uh, we're fortunate to have, have them all stepping forward.
Uh, we'll bring it back in to the room.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's hard to ignore, uh, Mr. McElvein's application to the BCA, which, uh, has some, many more open spots and so there's, uh, there's something to hoping that maybe he, he takes one of those slots, so it's hard to, it's hard to look at, look at that and not then lean towards maybe the experience of, of Timmy Dugan on the planning commission in advance. I really did appreciate Ryan's thoughtfulness and the decision-making process that he articulated, I think was really, 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 really interesting and I would really love, uh, to see Ryan be, uh, part of town government, uh, as soon as possible. Um, and you know, there is that alternate position on the BCA that is open and we have no applicant for it, so, you know, that's sort of, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at you, Ryan, for potentially taking up that role as a first step into, uh, into Netherlands town politics, but my, my thanking is, uh, Timmy Dugan for the planning commission.
Ryan, it was my gateway drug, the BCA.
Mine, too, actually. Yeah, it's for, I did that for two years before I got in the planning commission. And I'm, and I'd say that to everyone, actually, not just Ryan.
Yeah, being, being on, uh, we currently have two new members on the planning commission without the experience, um, that Timmy would bring. Um, so I'd really like to see him on the planning commission because of the, um, the experience that he does have previously on it. Um, but I do agree that all three of the candidates for the planning commission seat are really, um, uh, would be beneficial to the town. I'd like to see them all participating in government in some manner.
Yeah, so I appreciate all four of you, well, all three of you all for putting in for the planning commission and I definitely feel like all three of you bring a lot to the table and I hope that all three of you get involved with government and, and, and stick with it and, and see where it takes you. Um, I, uh, I thi, I think ultimately with the experience that they have, I, I lean towards Ryan and, and Timmy towards the PC. Timmy, because he's got the experience in, on the PC directly and Ryan because of his work experience. Uh, Timmy, no offense, I tend to be leery of Realtors in government, but in your case, um, I think you seem like a conscientious from the way you've talked some and, um, I do think your experience is pretty, is quite important and I know Roger spoke highly of you when this seat came up a few months back. Um, and you brought up a really good point, Karen, about the lack of, uh, um, experience of a couple of folks on, on the planning commission. So I, I, I'm a little torn, I'm probably leaning towards Timmy, but I'm, I'm still kind of chewing on it with Ryan, too, so.
I have nothing more to ask or say.
Thanks, Tom. Um, someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Timmy Dugan to the planning commission.
A second.
Thanks. Uh, go ahead and take the role, please. Macy?
Trustee Sterling.
Yes.
Trustee Blakemore.
Yes.
Trustee Cooms Ismail.
Yes.
Mayor Billy.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mahold.
No.
Trustee Severs.
Yes.
And trustee Corvallon.
Yes.
Thank you.
Wipeout.
Thanks for making this look like a truly representative government. Um, and thanks, that was a hard decision right up to the last second, actually. Um, I appreciate it, the, the motion passes and, and Timmy Dugan will be, um, appointed to the planning commission and I would think maybe a quick break and then we can come back and, um, talk BCA. We can make it like five minutes, that would be amazing. We can make it like five minutes. That would be amazing.
I second that.
So, yeah, I want to keep this one a front burner.
Yes.
Yeah.
Think we're about there. It seems like everyone is in the room. Who needs to be in the room? Yeah, yeah, we will have, we will have to give. Was number four, but we have to all. Yeah, we'll see if Steve, yeah, what we have to do is appoint you and then the alternates. Yeah. So there is, it's a bit of a decision. Okay. Okay. Um, we are ready. Macy and Miranda, when you are.
So. If Macy's ready.
Yes, I'm ready to go. Thank you.
Great. So we are all present and accounted for. I don't, I can't remember if you need to redo the role. I don't think you do. Um, but we're all here and, um, we'd like to continue on with, uh, action item seven point two, appointment to the board of zoning adjustment. We have two applications. And we have someone else in the room who may be interested. Um, so if Steven CPEC is out there, um, Steve, we'd love to hear from you. I can't see all the names up there, so.
All right.
Hey.
All right. Can everybody see me?
Yes.
All right. Uh, hi again, everybody. Uh, so I'm here again. Uh, I am, you know, as Billy put it, it's the, the zoning board for me, or the board of zoning adjustment is for me, really a stepping stone into further things, uh, with, with Netherlands. Um, I don't have a great passion for zoning adjustment. I'll be honest with you, but it does seem like something that I can contribute my energy towards. I've, I've expressed to you all before how much I love Netherlands. I've lived in Netherlands for about, um, seven years proper in town and nine years in the area. Um, and I definitely see the town is going to be growing in the future. And, um, overall, there's going to be need for great minds to help make sure that growth is what we all want for this town. And not that I would call myself a great mind, but I think that I can, uh, make some good decisions and, you know, look forward to hopefully making some good decisions with the, uh, the board.
Thanks, Steve. And, um, I'd like to turn it to the trustees and see if any of the trustees have any questions for Steve.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate you stepping up again.
No worries. Happy to be here.
Yep. I appreciate that, that you stepped up and I appreciate your, you know, got a lot going on so that you decided BZA might be a better fit at this point. But, um, yeah. Thanks for being willing.
Yeah, no, it's my apologies for, uh, kind of putting my foot in the door with the, the planning commission there. But honestly, it's life has gotten very hectic and I feel like I had kind of bitten off a bit more than I can chew over the past few months. So I need to just reprioritize and the BZA seems like a, a good fit where it's not as large a time commitment. And it's still something that I can contribute to Ned. So hopefully it'll work out.
Uh, trustees, Corvallin, Sterling and, um, Severs, any questions?
Um, Steve, thanks for replying again. And, uh, yeah, it was great connecting with you there at the bike shop the other day. Um, you know, the thing I guess I've always noticed about you and kind of been struck when I interact with you is just, uh, I would say, you know, you made that comment about your extraordinary mind and, you know, kind of disparaging, but I, I would say to you that, um, your heart has always been something that I feel, you know, and when I'm engaging with you. And, and I would say that of, all the people that I've had interactions with in, in town lately, I've, I've really felt that you have a great example of an extraordinary heart. And I, uh, would love to hear how your heart is engaged in this application or opportunity, or where you might feel that this is, um, how you might be able to bring your heart to this position.
Um, good question. You know, and to be honest with you, I don't know how, um, how much heart one can bring into zoning adjustment. Um, but I think that overall when it comes to conflict resolution, if there is any, any conflict with zoning adjustment, and I think that's one of the big, big points is just making sure that all parties are being served well, um, and communicating with those parties and trying to make sure that everybody is getting maybe not everything that they want, but at least compromise enough that everybody walks away happy. Um, and we can continue being good neighbors with one another. Um, yeah. So that's, that's how I would bring my heart into it. And also, uh, Jesse, as a quick side note, I do want to follow up with you about the, uh, the bike idea. I've got some ideas.
Cool. Thanks.
Yeah.
Thanks, Jesse. Um, Tanya and Nicole.
Yeah. So Steve, hi, it's Nicole. Um, what are you hoping to get out of your, this appointment? What would you either like to learn? Or what are you kind of envisioning that you get out of, uh, this appointment?
Um, really just being part of downtown government, um, getting familiar with all the different players in town. Um, overall, I feel like I can again contribute with, with good communication ability with different parties and, and finding compromise. So I hope to really just find a place sort of, uh, with diplomacy in town. And overall, I just enjoy participating and, and having gotten to know a lot of the people on town government. If I can participate in any way that I can, it's, it's something that makes my heart happy and we'll see what it leads to in the future. And I feel the, the BZA is a perfect stepping stone where, um, if it does frankly end up being too much for me, it's, it's not as important a role necessarily, in my opinion, as the BOT or the planning commission. Um, it's definitely less time commitment overall, but it allows me to put my foot in the door with town government, with Ned.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry to interrupt. Go ahead, Nicole.
No, go ahead. That's all ahead.
I, I think it is a pretty important position because you have the final say on code variances. And so, it, it's a pretty powerful position, I think.
Oh, absolutely. It's, I, I, I don't feel it has quite as much weight on the shoulders as the BOT or the PC necessarily.
Agree.
Any other questions? Tanya, any questions for Steve?
I do not. Thank you, Steve, for stepping up.
Thanks, Tanya.
Great. If, if anything else for Steve, um, I guess I'd like to ask Ryan, first of all, um, do you have an interest in, in, in moving forward towards possibly being appointed or being appointed to the BZA? Okay, great. Is there anything else you want to add? And if so, come on up. What was that for?
Sorry, Mayor Billy, did he say yes?
He, he said he thinks he's good. So he doesn't have anything to add at this point. Dave?
But yes, he did say yes, he's interested.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Yeah, that was actually.
Yeah, we can't see him. So I wasn't sure if that was a yes or a no. Okay, got it. Thank you.
I apologize. He isn't, Ryan. Villa, Villa Lan. Villa, can I say it again? Villa Lan is interested in being on the BZA. David, are you interested in, is there anything you'd like to say? Cause you did turn in a specific application for the BZA. Is there anything else you'd like to say as we move forward?
I do, I do have a bit of, uh, experience with the BZA. Actually, I've been in front of it myself, uh, four years ago. Um, I had a, was trying to, growing family, expanding my house. Um, I have a pie shaped lot and, um, very weird to work with. So I had to expand in my rear setback. So yeah, I, I went, went in front of the BZA. I know how the process works. And I do know that, you know, there are many properties like mine, which are odd with large rocks and weird features. And you need to work with all those things and, and, uh, sometimes specific rules and, and, uh, codes don't necessarily work with those. And you have to seek some relief. Um, but at the same time, you also have to get along harmoniously with your neighbors too. That's the big aspect of this. It's like you're looking for almost permission from your neighbors to say, I'd like to, you know, build closer to you or do this thing that's going to affect you. So, you know, how can we work something out that, that is, uh, that has a happy outcome for everyone?
That's a really good point. And having been on the BZA, I've seen that go both directions, big time, based on neighbor relations. I, uh,
So that was all.
Thanks, Davey. I was, I was, um, on the BZA for whatever part of a year when they, the first you and Jessica brought your
Yeah.
variance to us. And you guys were amazing, totally. You went through the process, which I think makes you a really good, um, person to be on the BZA because you, because it was not easy. I know Cynthia worked with you guys and you guys went through the process and kind of nailed everything, but it was a lot of work to get there. So that is something you can help people with and empathize with people with, because it was a lot of work for you guys. Any other que, any questions for David? If not, we'll go ahead and go to public comment. Is there any public comment, um, for the applicants for BZA?
Ron Mitchell, I think in all your appointments, when someone expresses, uh, willingness to be open minded and collaborate and, uh, compromise, that that should be, uh, heavily considered.
Thanks, Ron. Appreciate it. Any other public comments from folks that are attending virtually? I'm hearing none. We'll go ahead and bring it back to the, um, trustees for final comments.
I would like to make a motion to appoint Steve CPEC and David McElvein to the BZA.
Second.
Um, just a sec. Do we have, um, so we have a motion on the floor to appoint Steve CPEC and David McElvein to the BZA. Do we have to do the alternate and the?
I'll make a second motion.
Okay. I didn't know if we had to do them separate or together. Okay. So we have.
I could add, I could add it to this motion. I'll, I'll move to appoint Steve CPEC, David McElvein to the BZA and to appoint Ryan Villa on to the BZA alternate position.
Second.
So we have a motion on the floor to appoint Steve CPEC and David McElvein to the BZA for seats for each of those. And then, um, to appoint Ryan Villa, Villa, Villa Leon. I'll get it. I'll get it. I swear. Villa Leon to the, uh, as, as an alternate to the BZA in a second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Trustee Severs.
Yes.
Trustee Kums Isma.
Yes.
Trustee Blakemore.
Yes.
Trustee Sterling.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mahold.
Yes.
Trustee Corvallon.
Yes.
And Mayor Billy.
Yes.
Okay.
So the motion, motion passes. Um, Steve and David will be appointed as seated members on, on the BZA and, and Ryan will be appointed as a, um, alternate. And yeah, I will say Martin Mole is hilarious. He's a lot of fun to be in these meetings with. He's a great guy. And Deb and, uh, um, Andrew Bliss are the other seated members. And then Roger is an alternate and you'll, you'll learn a lot, I guarantee you. Thank you, guys. So, um, we have our third action item for the evening, the right of way vacation, seven point three right of way vacation request. North Second Street Alleyway with Ron Mitchell. I think, um, that Ron and or, um, Miranda are gonna.
I'll just do a quick introduction. I'll make a quick. Um, this already came to you before. And the board of trustees have requested that it go to the planning commission for review. Uh, currently this is, excuse me, a right of way vacation to vacate the alleyway north of Second Street. Um, it is behind the Peak to Peak Animal Hospital and then, uh, the, the building to the north. Uh, Ron is seeking that that be vacated. Um, his intention is to do a lot line, a replat to adjust the lot lines to the south. And so this is something he is looking for as a part of that process. But I'll turn it over to Ron to introduce your application.
I think I really owe Lee Stadel a lot of credit and thanks for working so hard on this particular project. And if you have any questions, I'm ready to answer them.
Go ahead.
Uh, this came before the planning commission and we both voted unanimously in favor of it because, um, it really doesn't have any value to the town. It's a little dead.
because it really doesn't have any value to the town. It's a little dead-end alley. So couldn't be used as a trail. It's just 16 feet wide, 113 feet long. The alley's been vacated east of Snyder already. And you can see that ordinance in the packet for that vacation. So I think it's a benefit to the town to vacate because the new owners would then be responsible for maintenance of the property. And yeah, maybe there's an increase in property tax. I want to thank Ron Mitchell and Lee Stadel for the replat and the vacation request.
Thanks, Karen. Any clarifying questions from the trustees? Any clarifying questions from trustees Curval and Severs or Sterling?
Nope.
Nope.
No.
I think we have to do public comment. I like to do, open it up for public comment if anyone has a comment on this right-of-way vacation. Anyone online? So hearing none, I'll, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the Board of Trustees for any deliberation or motions.
I move to approve ordinance number 830, approving the request to vacate alleyway north of Second Street with no conditions.
Second.
A second.
So we have a move to approve this vacation request and two seconds. First one was by Karen. Go ahead and take a roll, Macy, if you would, please.
Trustee Sterling. Trustee Sever. Oh, I'm sorry. Trustee Blakemore.
Yes.
Trustee Kumsesma.
Yes.
Mayor Billy.
Yes.
Trustee Corvalon.
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Mahold.
I'm always in favor of vacation. Yes.
Thank you.
I like it. Yeah, thanks for being patient, Ron. And what you've helped us do is make this process easier for people in the future, that they won't have to be here first time.
Thank you, too.
Thanks. So from here, if everyone's good, we can, to keep going, we can move on into discussion items. We have three. I'm hoping we can get to them. We also were hoping to bounce back to executive session at the end. A very important piece of finish-up business. But our first discussion item is 8.1 paid family leave and medical leave insurance for town.
Town Attorney Madsen is going to do it since it's getting a little bit harder for me.
Yes. Excellent. Thanks, Jennifer.
So in November 2020, the Colorado voters approved paid family medical leave. It's abbreviated as FAMLI. And what it is, is a social insurance program really to provide paid leave to employees through a payroll deduction. That payroll deduction is 0.9% of an employee's paycheck. And the employer pays half, the employee pays the other half. So 0.45 to the employee, 0.45 to the employer. It allows employees to take 12 weeks of, of leave. And they receive replacement pay for that 12 weeks of leave. And it's designated qualifications for that leave, for the employee's health, family members' health. There's a domestic violence component of the leave. And I don't have the other ones in front of me, but they're very similar to the federal FMLA. The state, in adopting this new law, that's voter-approved, allowed public employers to opt out of this paid family leave. And the reason is essentially that it's an unfunded mandate for, to require public employers to participate. So all public employers have an option to opt out. And that means that the, then the employer would not participate in this family. Now, Miranda did send a survey. She sent the email or the information to employees, allowed them to provide comments as to whether those employees thought that the town should participate or should not participate. And all of the feedback, I believe, that employees provided is that there wasn't an interest to have, to participate in this program. They don't want the deduction from their paycheck. I will say that I'm aware most local governments have decided to decline participation. This starts, the program starts January of 2023. That's when the payroll deductions start. And then employees can take the benefit starting January 2024. So what you would be doing now is if you voted to decline participation, you would be essentially not participating for January 2023. You could decide later to opt in if you wanted to. And another very important thing to mention is that individual employees. So if you, as a town, decide to opt out, individual employees can decide to opt in. And so those individual employees would send their 0.45% of their paycheck to the state. And they could collect the, their, the partial replacement pay if they had a qualifying event.
And I just, and I just see the next steps is that this is going to come back before us on Tuesday, December 6th, as an action item.
You, you have to make a decision before the end of this year.
Right.
So it needs to come back before you. As a resolution, the state has said that you need to provide notice to the employees of your public meeting date where you're going to decide. And that way employees can submit comments in advance or can submit comments at that meeting date and, and let you know what they want. So it does have to come back before you.
So that's when we officially, as the, as the aim reads, we will be asked at that meeting in December 6th officially vote on whether the town will opt in or out. And tonight, the question before the board as a discussion item is whether or not we want to opt in or out.
Yeah, I mean, essentially what we're looking for from the Board of Trustees tonight is basically a nod of four direction to bring back an ordinance opting out of the family program.
I'd like to open up for clarifying questions from trustees.
Mike, I got one question. Is there any reason why we would not opt out, given what we've heard from the employees and and the, and other towns?
I mean, I do have to admit, I'm a bit confused. I don't really understand why folks want to opt out. It's the 0.45% calculated over, I mean, this is not very much money.
I can explain, I think. They get 176 hours of PTO per year for the first five years and 216 per year after that and 12 paid government holidays. So they have a lot of time that they can use. And then if you read the packet, the excess that you have, you can only carry over 176 or 216. But the excess that you have can be put into a pool for employees that need more time off than what they, they have in their PTO. So.
And I think is, does that where it's, I see individual employees can participate if they want. So they can actually choose to pay the 0.45%, but the pool is, is a, you explained that to me before. Like, that's a pretty cool benefit that people can draw from. I know my brother, when he got really sick at CU Boulder, it's shocking how much time he got paid for because of all the CU Boulder employees just pulling their.
Yeah, the, I mean, the pool, the pool is great. The PTO thing is great. But that, that amount, that number of hours is actually not that much. I mean, if we're talking about the birth of a child, I mean, that it's, it's an irrelevant number of hours, that PTO. Like, so I, I do, I do find it a bit odd. And I'm not convinced that this is a good idea to, to, to not participate in this program. And I, you know, I don't want to, I don't purport to tell people what's, what's good for them necessarily. But it does seem ill-advised to save 200 bucks a year or whatever it would be to not participate in this program that could really save your bacon in a, in a, in a life-altering situation. And we're talking about economies of scale here. And, you know, we don't have the capacity to provide this kind of insurance as a town necessarily. And the scaled economy at state level is really helpful for that. So to not participate seems very odd to me and I don't fully understand it.
What, what is the average amount of money that someone would actually pay? I mean, is that a hard question to answer?
It's not. But so this program was just adopted in 2020. The state is really behind in getting this all together. And they're scrambling and the regulations are being implemented in piecemeal fashion in terms of, first, there was regulations related to local government opt-out. Now there's, their private employers and public employers can get a replacement policy, insurance policy. There's regulations now about those replacement policies. And then there's going to be regulations on implementing the statute related to other employer benefits, such as paid time off and that type of thing. So a lot of local governments are saying, we don't really know what the rules are related to this. And so we're going to wait and not participate right away and see. And also see if it affects our hiring and retention. If, if those things, if we see that it affects hiring and retention, we see the rules fall into place, then maybe we'll decide to opt in.
Well, see, now that, that to me seems like a more logical reason to opt out at this, at this particular moment, rather than the idea that it's that high of a cost. I mean, the 0.45%, I mean, I've done some napkin math. It's, you know, for what, for the benefit that it's purporting to provide, you know, it, it seems obvious that it's worth it. So I think that I would agree with town staff's recommendations at this point to decline participation with an eye on the future to maybe once things are sorted out and we understand how all this works, we go back in. Now, I did have a question about the third option, right? So the three options were mentioned in this, in this pamphlet that we were given. Decline employer participation is one of them. Is there any reason why we wouldn't do that? Because in that circumstance, if an employee decided that they wanted to participate in the program, we could help them, help ease some of the administrative burden of doing so. My suspicion is no one would voluntarily participate in the program if they had to do those quarterly wage reportings and also maintain the account themselves. Like, to me, that seems too burdensome. And so if we want to make it an optional thing for our, for our staff, it seems like we should choose the decline employer participation option.
I, I don't know how difficult, I don't know what town's payroll system. I think, you know, a lot of the state payroll systems are gearing up for this. So I don't know how difficult it would be for town staff to remit those quarterly payments for an individual who had decided to opt in.
We could ask Rita and Christie to weigh in on that.
No, I mean, it's, it would be a payroll deduction, it seems, of just 0.45 paid by the employee. Then they would have opted into it voluntarily, so no one's forcing them to pay it. But, you know, the administrative burden of doing it would be on the town rather than on the employee themselves. Because I think if we're truly, if we're truly thinking, oh, we're going to make it an option for employees, then that seems to be the right way to go.
And what are the benefits? It's 1,100 per week for how many weeks?
That's the maximum. That's the maximum. And that's for 12 weeks.
Or up to 16 in other circumstances.
Right.
50% of the state average weekly wage.
It's a, it's a calculation based on average weekly wage. It's, I mean, it's not, it's not a straight calculation.
Well, like, I, I hear what Eric Kumsesma is saying. And I, I think we really need to understand the benefits of this a little bit better. So if, if we decline it in January, for January, but then we can revisit it in February, is that the idea?
I, I mean, I would suggest that it's something that maybe you revisit next budget year and see where the state is at implementing it, if there's any concerns from employees, hiring or retention. If you opt in, you opt in for a period of three years. So you're making a commitment. And if you, the other hand, if you decide to opt out, you have to visit that opt-out decision every eight years.
And it, this is, you said it's not funded through the state, that it's funded by employers and employees only?
Correct.
Okay.
And, and so that is another thing, I mean, it's a minor thing to note, but that 0.9% could go up.
It seems it's statutorily limited at 1.2.
Yes.
So has anyone figured out how much it would cost Nederlin for their share of it? The amount of employees we have, I mean, what's the math on that, just for the future?
Total salaries times 0, 0.2.
Yeah, but has anyone done that math? That when you're bringing this to us, like, basically saying, nobody wants to do it and the town can't afford it? I'm just curious if, well, how much it is.
Yeah.
And the only thing I would add on to that, because when this was passed, having work at, being working in HR at the time, there was also the administrative, you know, like, I think someone else had brought up is, you know, what's the impact of processing all of it? That needs to kind of go into that math equation as well.
But I will say, I do not think that PTO is a solution for what this is solving, the problem that this is solving. So I don't think putting those two things next to each other makes any sense at all. I don't think we should continue to do that. I don't, I don't see it as a like-for-like comparison. And I can say, without a family leave program, I would have been lost at multiple points in my life. Like, this is a seriously useful benefit. And if people don't see it now, they will feel it when they need it.
How many, how many, what's the maximum number of weeks that someone could take on this program?
It's 16 for, I think that that's for the birth of a child.
Complications in a pregnancy.
Yes.
But 12 weeks is the standard. And it could also be for taking care of a sick family member. I mean, you know, this, this happens and people lose their jobs and lose their livelihoods because, you know, someone gets sick. This helps mitigate the impacts of that. My, my feeling on it is that I would like to decline employer participation rather than decline all participation. That means that if one of our employees still wanted to participate in a program like this, we could support them in doing so at the town level. That, to me, makes the most sense.
And they would receive 50% of the benefits, is that how that works?
No, it's, the way that it's working now is an individual who participates, who is an employee of a local government who has declined to participate, that individual still receives full benefits.
Okay, so they pay the 0.45%, employer pays nothing and they still could get the full?
Yeah. I mean, where, where you're missing out is those employees who don't, who are not risk averse and who don't plan ahead. And those employees don't plan for this and they're not going to individually participate. That's where you would be, those employees would be missing out.
So the big difference is that it's not job-protected leave when it is decline employer participation. That's the only part that changes, is that they lose the job protection benefit. But they get all the others, the financial benefits they get.
So it, it is, yes. But I, I, having conversations with Miranda, I don't, I'm not sure that anybody has had those types of leaves and been terminated.
Right, exactly. I don't, I don't see that becoming a problem for us. To me, it makes no sense not to choose the decline employer option.
Yeah, no, I see what you're saying.
So, so before we bring. So, so before we bring this back in December, could we look at that option of just the employee participation part, not the employer?
Yeah, it's, so it would just be a question for Christie and Rita as to how that would work. You know, maybe they could contact the payroll service that they work with, see if that, that's an option.
And I mean, if we have a majority of employees who are not interested in participating to begin with, I don't think many folks are going to take this up, and so I don't think the administrative burden would be exceptionally high on town staff.
All right, so I'm reading the minutiae here. So it seems, I mean, the question before the board is the, does the BOT want to opt in or out? Opt out of family? What I'm hearing said is that the employer, decline the employer participation is what we're leaning towards. And then just getting a little more information from Christie and Rita. Are we there?
Yes, yep.
Cool. Thanks, everybody, and, um, this, getting there, our next discussion item is going to be spearheaded by Trustee Severs. Make sure I'm like, yep, on the Good Neighbor Guidelines, discussion item 8.2. Jesse, out there?
Yep.
Okay, great.
Thanks, everyone. So I just want to, again, give a big thanks to Miranda for, for supporting the efforts of putting this together. And, um, yeah, I mean, the main, the main purpose of this, this initiative comes out of my experience of living in this town of Netherlands for 12 years now, and having some, some really great neighbor, neighborhood experiences and, and really great relationships that I've formed with my neighbors, and then also some really challenging ones. And also, working in excavation, I've been a part of a lot of neighbor disputes over relatively minor stuff that I've seen blow up into really, you know, really damaging scenarios and conflicts that are, that could be easily, easily averted, in my opinion, and, and oftentimes between people who, who I care about, both, both parties. And, you know, I've played roles in, in, in being a mediator in the past, and I also have a background in mediation, and I, I really care about people getting along. And not only that, but I feel that, you know, building strong relationships with our neighbors is one of the most important things we could be doing as a town, and to have a deliberate practice and some, some, some commitments that we're making to ourselves and to one another to, to partake in, in behaviors that, that encourage and facilitate good, good, strong relationships amongst our neighbors. And I feel that that's one of the things we can do to, to create safety in our neighborhoods, more, more so than anything else, and, you know. I'm not an expert in this, but I feel that, that having good, strong relationships with my neighbors makes me feel more safe than having, you know, than anything else, really. And, you know, we really look to the police to set a sense of safety for us and sort of a, kind of a top-of-mind solution for creating safety. However, I think if we look a little deeper, when, when we, when we really feel safe is when we feel we're amongst people that we love. And when, you know, we're so blessed to live in a small town like Netherlands, where we have the opportunity to, to really know such a large portion of the town, and to, to be able to walk around town so easily, and to see people we know when we walk all the way across town and, and have it take twice as long as, as we'd like sometimes, just because we want to stop and say hi to people. So, um, you know, the one thing that I wanted to say, uh, you know, at one point, just as far as Miranda, getting to know Miranda and her, her opportunity to, or my opportunity to watch Miranda lead, since I've been appointed on the BOT, is she has, and we have, as a town government, seen a lot of turnover. And I feel that, um, you know, with, with all the, all the turnover and, and sort of the, the transitions that we've gone through, I feel that we're, we're having an opportunity to kind of build a new and, and build back stronger and to have a, uh, an opportunity to, to create a, a forward, forward motion or an evolution in our culture, in how, how we're, how we're operating culturally as a town government. And I, I want to take the opportunity to, um, to take just my experience of living here in Netherlands for the last 12 years and, and what I've experienced just with, with some of my really great neighborhood and neighbor relationships, as well as some of the challenging ones and some of the, some of the more, um, you know, saddening neighbor disputes that I've seen happen throughout the years here as well, and, and offer a solution. And that solution is something that was really provided to me in many respects by Ron Mitchell, as well as my wife Angela, as a really simple, really small tweak to how we're escalating town complaints and how, how complaints about our neighbors are being escalated and, you know, processed with our town staff. And the solution that I'm offering is there, presented before you in the aim. And, you know, I, I feel I've spoken with, with, I believe, all of you on this. Maybe Nicole, I haven't, I haven't really dug into the nitty-gritty with you on this yet. But, uh, you know, I'm happy to answer questions. I'd love to have this be something where you guys can kind of feel and, and, and identify with, with where I'm coming from on this, and we can collaborate, and we can craft something that will be a really, really strong step towards, um, creating a structure that will facilitate good neighbor relations and, uh, yeah, just a really good guideline for us to, to work through difficult conversations as neighbors. So I'm open to any questions you guys have, any, any conversations we want to have about it. And I guess, one last thing I'll say is, you know, we, as BOT members, are the leaders of this town. We've been elected to, to, to represent a certain ability to have a, have a leadership role here. And we are holding ourselves to this, this standard, which we're asking everyone else to, to follow suit in this town as well, which is, basically, we're hard on issues, not one another, and that we, we resolve our disputes with mediation. So with all that said, let's, um, let's discuss.
I have a question. This is Tanya. Would this, would this, uh, like, what if it's just a simple code complaint? That's obviously, you know, like, no parking on town roads, and the neighbor doesn't like to use their driveway when it snows because they don't plow their driveway and they park on the street. The plow can't get through, and they do it all the time. Why couldn't the town just give them a warning and then a ticket? Like, I don't understand why it has to go through this whole process of, like, I don't, I don't know, in some situations that are really clear-cut and simple, why town staff couldn't just follow the code and the, you know, like, is this going to apply to everything? So like, you know, you can't just, like, say, this car has parked, been parked here for, like, three weeks. Can you please just go and give them a warning and then a ticket? You know, like you would normally do? Or are you saying that in clear-cut issues, that's still allowed? Is this like a law where we're not allowed to complain, and we have to go talk to our neighbor? I'm, I'm just curious. At certain things, I feel like it's just easier for them just to, you know, give them a ticket.
Yeah.
We have codes already, and we have the ability to tick it for violations of the code.
Yep, that's absolutely right, Tanya, and I agree. You know, I think you're cutting right to the heart and the crux of, of what we're getting at here. And also, as we had the, the comment from Judge Thrower, our appointed judge.
Yeah.
And he, he gave us, yeah, he gave us some really good food for thought in how we're approaching this, and I, I do feel that it's important that we, we do consider the, the legal implications of what I'm proposing and suggesting here. And I do think that we also need to consider, you know, getting some advice from Attorney Madsen as well on all this. And with all that said, my personal feeling is that, yes, I would like for you to go knock on your neighbor's door and say, hey, please don't do that. And if they slam the door, or they say, no, I'm not going to talk to you, or that's ridiculous, or, you know, it completely, completely breaks down, then you ask for, for mediation.
Why would we call in mediation for a, a clear-cut code violation? That the town could just drive by, the plow guy can see that every day he plows the street, that this car is parked on the street. Why do I have to spend my time in mediation for something that is, is a clear-cut, it's not like a compromise? We're not trying to find a compromise. Just park in your driveway. I'm just using this as an example. You know, you're, you're causing a road hazard, you're making the road one lane when it could be two. I, I don't know why I have to waste my time for something that's really just a town staff problem. It's clear-cut. The people who plow the streets can see this, the police who drive by can see this. You know, they can put a little ticket on their windshield saying, hey, you're not allowed to park on town streets, town code blah, 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 blah. I mean, I, I just feel like in some cases, you're asking a lot of, um, people who are busy. And I know you're trying to take the load off of Miranda, but...
I am, and Miranda's busy.
Yeah, but she's town-paid staff, and we're taxpaying residents that there's a code out there that says no parking on town streets. And what's the point of this code if I have to go and knock on my neighbor's door and then get a mediator and go back and forth on this when it's not a debatable issue? I understand some things are more debatable, like the goat issue or whatnot.
Well, that's exactly what I mean.
But I mean, there should be some cases that are just clear-cut. It's not, it's not a knock on your neighbor door and like, hey...
Well, if you walk through town and see how many people park on the streets.
So...
Yeah, well, if it's a problem for the plow, that, you know, you're not getting the streets plowed.
Can I, can I jump in here? I agree with what Tanya's saying. I think that we do need to have the capability. Citizens should be able to report code violations without talking to your neighbor. Personally, I, I do talk to my neighbors, but it could be a neighbor who lives on another street. And I, and, you know, there's some safety issues with, uh, so we can't force citizens to talk to their neighbors. And, um, and I think the town should respond to code violations in a way that's consistent and fair, and that our Good Neighbor Guidelines should have the code reference in them, like the judge recommended. I would suggest, I, you know, I think, I think mediation is a good step. I think the town is the one who should decide when to take that step. You know, and it needs to be done before it escalates to where the people just will not accept mediation, but not on a single code violation.
Yeah, Jesse, what would be a good example of where this would be a good, good policy? You're thinking in your head that got you motivated?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I have, I have a lot of examples. I guess, um, I would like to just stick with the, the parking on the street, for example, for a moment, because I think that's a perfect example. And if you walk through town on any given snow day, you're going to see a lot of, a lot of cars parked on streets. Some of those cars parked on streets are going to have upset neighbors about that, and they're going to report some of those to town staff. Now, Miranda is going to go and do her best to enforce that code with her staff or how, whatever means she's using for code enforcement. And so that's an impartial enforcement of the code. And there's, there's a lot of code violations all over town, and, you know, we have a pretty extensive code as well, and the only way to actually enforce the code is based on customer complaints. So we're basically weaponizing town staff to essentially fight our fights for us and to go ahead and nitpick your neighbor and to get Miranda to go and start harassing your neighbor to enforce that portion of the code. Meanwhile, you may or may not be violating some portion of the code yourself. And/or, you know, there's, there's 100, 100 other people in town doing the exact same thing, but because you're upset with your neighbor because she's in your way, you're going to basically ask Miranda to go and, and tell her to move the car.
So if I might just offer a, a potential way of looking at this. Now, I don't understand what Trustee Severs is proposing here as a law, as a law that you have to talk to your neighbor. I mean, I think that's...
Well, I'm not, I'm not actually proposing a law.
Right, that's what I'm saying. There's no law being proposed here. This is a good name, these are Good Neighbor Guidelines that we kind of, uh, we vote on, and we decide as a board that we think that this is a, a good way for residents of Netherlands to interact with each other. That, to me, doesn't mean that we're not going to enforce code complaints, right? We're going to enforce code complaints because that's the law, right? And you have to, you have to do it, right? That's just the way things go. But that doesn't mean we can't say...
Whoa, whoa, whoa.
Well, hold on, this doesn't mean that we can't say...
Yeah, go ahead.
...to someone, uh, like, maybe, let's take that parking example, right? Let's say it's not a single time, right? This is an ongoing issue. The car is ticketed, car still, still parks on the street, still obstructing a neighbor's driveway, or something along those lines. You know, it's an ongoing issue that maybe needs to be resolved some other way other than ticketing, because the ticketing isn't working, right? This is a great, I think, way to, to implement the Good Neighbor Guidelines. It's sort of like, all right, well, town has a system here. If you guys have talked about it and it hasn't resulted in anything, we can provide you a mediator to resolve this particular dispute. That, that doesn't mean town's going to stop enforcing code. You know, town has to enforce code. That's the law. Like, there's no way around that. And I think that's what Judge Thrower is kind of getting at. It's like, we can have Good Neighbor Guidelines, we can have a philosophy of how we hope people might interact and encourage people to interact in that way, and even provide resources and support for them to interact in that way. But that doesn't mean we're not going to stop enforcing our code.
Correct. And the other thing is, um, well, I guess, the main point I'm trying to make is our code is extensive and vast, and there's a lot going on in there. And I don't feel that there is a complete and perfect enforcement of the code, nor is it even possible or potentially even desirable from the BOT. I think we would need to beef up our budget significantly and invest heavily in code enforcement and double down on our resources for, for more safe-built patrolling and looking for and ticketing code violations, which is not the town I'm trying to create. And so, as a result, code enforcement is driven by complaints. And that, to me, is a problem. And that, to me, begs a solution.
I fundamentally agree, there needs to be another path other than just constantly reporting your neighbor over and over and over again. Like, there needs to be another path. And I think that what Trustee Severs is providing is that, is that a...
In fact, it's a, it's a, I like that you're willing, that we'd be paying for this mediation. How much, um, I just know, when I brought this up publicly, I thought people were going to love it, and people were like aghast because they were like, my neighbors are crazy. There's no way... There's no way I'm ever going to knock on their door. We have criminals.
My neighbor.
That live in our.
My neighbor is crazy too.
Yeah, but you're a dude. And not all women are comfortable approaching crazy guys.
Well, it was my wife who got yelled at. And I stepped, and it was Angie who stepped in and said, hey, you know, if you could please just respect our property and not come on our property without our permission and let your dogs come and growl at our, our daughters.
Yeah, that's horrible, yeah.
Then we would really appreciate that. And they said, and she said, well, if you want us to do anything about it, you're going to have to call the police. And so we said, okay, we called the police. And then every time we sent the police to go talk to her, because she came and trespassed on our property again, we were always sure to tell the police that we would love to do mediation, if the police would like to do mediation, because they offered that. The police said, hey, if you'd like to do mediation, you know, we can help you guys with mediation. I said, absolutely, we'd love to just talk to her, we'd love to have a relationship with her. But, you know, she hasn't been interested in that. So was this really time? Yeah, it was resolved in, in, in court. She asked for trial by jury. But it was, it was very difficult and very time-consuming. It took us the sense, years before we were able to gather up the evidence and prove it. And Jen Fineleven was supportive in, in pushing the case through. And she got community service and she has to write us a letter saying she's not going to trespass anymore, which she hasn't done that yet. And I don't know what the status of her community service is, but.
When she was ticketed, was.
So actually, I need to, I need to stop action here. It is almost 10 o'clock and I don't want to stop the conversation, but we have to agree or, or vote to extend, to, to continue conversation on this. I also know that we have one more executive session item to drop back into, which should not take too long, I don't think. And then I think we have to talk about probably rescheduling the last discussion item. To be honest, or else it will not get the time it deserves.
So I, I prefer to go right into the executive session and pick up, revisit the Good Neighbor Guidelines at another meeting.
Oh, oh, okay. I also would like to.
Okay, so, that's not like a, um, so, and I agree with you. So I, I would like to do that. I think we, we still have to vote to extend for us.
I'm moving to adjourn.
You have to, you have to have an executive session in a regular meeting?
You can't adjourn, yeah. That happened once before with you guys, a couple months ago.
So I would extend, move to extend the regular meetings.
Yeah, I, I moved to extend the, the discussion item. Actually, I, I moved to extend the regular meeting to 10:30, I think it was the buffer.
Second.
And it's really going to just be what we need for the executive session. Go ahead, Maisy, please take the role.
Okay, Mayor Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Mahold?
Yes.
Thank you.
Trustee Blakemore?
Yes.
Trustee Kums Ismael?
Yes.
Trustee Corvalon?
Yes.
Trustee Severs?
Yes.
And trustee Sterling?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. So what I think we are going to do is table the Good Neighbor Guidelines and, and bring, come back to them. And then we will reschedule. And I've been looking at the forecaster here. I have a good idea for where we'll put the goals and move those to a different meeting. And so that's my plan for those two discussion items, if everyone's good with that. And then I need to move, I would, I would like to move, I, I, I am asking for a motion for an executive session.
I move to go into an executive session pursuant to section 2464024F Colorado Revised Statutes to discuss matters related to the town administrator position and for which the employee has consented to the executive session discussion.
A second. Go ahead and.
We're going to need a minute.
We'll need a minute and then Miranda will take the vote.
Okay.
Deal with the doors?
Yeah, thank you.
So Maisy, do you want to jump off so I don't mess it up? If you want to jump off first?
Yes, will do, thank you.
Thanks to all you other folks who attended online. See you next time.